Oh, yeah, I can put that down. Um, I don't think he's got hips. Good, how are you? Yes. Okay. Oh, I'm just gonna go ahead and push it down. Okay. I've never tried. Hi. How you doing?
Good, how are you, dear?
Doing okay. You guys doing better? Feeling better.
I would do.
You have more words on yours than mine. See what I got? I'm gonna use my leg.
Alright.
Welcome, everyone. This is the City Council Regular Meeting of Tuesday, January twenty-second of two thousand and nineteen, and we are going to begin with the call to order through the invocation and a pledge of allegiance. Please stand if you are able.
Father, inspire us in our ideas through our thoughts and actions. Help us to progress in our endeavors for the city and its people. Through your knowledge of our needs, we ask your guidance so that we will be successful and beneficial to all. In Jesus' name we ask it, amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Would the clerk please take the roll?
Yes, ma'am. Member Sierra.
Present.
Member Berentine.
Present.
Member Costa.
Present.
Member Martinez. Mayor Potem Russell.
Present.
Member Wink.
Present.
Mayor Olson.
Here.
Six present and one absent, the one absent being Councilmember Martinez.
Thank you. Agenda five is consideration of minutes of previous session. Gotta get a motion in a second to approve the minutes of the regular City Council meeting of January seventh, two thousand and nineteen.
I move to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Any concerns, discussion? If not, please vote.
All votes being cast, let the record show six ayes.
Agenda item number six is recognition of scheduled public comment. The deadline to sign up to speak for scheduled public comment is Wednesday by five P.M. prior to the meeting through the city clerk's office. Only those who meet the deadline can speak in this section. This is an opportunity for the public to address all of City Council. There's an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. Please limit your presentation to five minutes. Written materials for presentation to council may be submitted to the city clerk as the speaker approaches the podium and a U.S.B. port is available for public presentation. First up tonight is Ms. Susan Elizabeth Lee, Chair and Executive Director of the co-founder Sockitum Sock Campaign. She's here to present an award to the city of Inglewood, a certificate of participation in the sock challenge. And actually, I think maybe it's Tony Arnaldi instead. So please, please tell us who you are so the public knows, and thank you for being here.
Hi, I'm Tony Arnaldi Taylor, and I work for the city of Inglewood, and I am here on behalf of Ms. Susan Lee from the Sockitum Challenge. So Ms. Lee couldn't be here today, and she apologizes profusely because she was very much planning on it. She was very excited to be here tonight to present this certificate of appreciation. In two thousand and eleven, Susan Lee formed this idea of the Sockitum Campaign. In two thousand and twelve, she asked her friend Phyllis to help her out, and they started the Sockitum Campaign Challenge. Since that time, as of August in two thousand and eighteen, they had collected over three hundred and sixty-one thousand pairs of socks. Their motto was, "We're taking socks to the streets." Anyone can participate at any location. Simply donate some socks, tell a friend, and spread the word. Tonight, I am here to present this certificate to Mayor Linda Olson from the Sockitum Campaign ambassadors for the participation of the city of Inglewood. In this past year, the goal is to get as many people a pair of socks that need them. And the city of Inglewood was able to donate six hundred and twenty pairs of socks this year, which came in, I think, fourth place. This was a South Metro Challenge, so there was Greenwood Village and several other cities that took part in this. And so I was very proud to be part of this and help with this, and yay, Inglewood, we did awesome. So, Mayor, I'd love to present this to you. And they also sent you this awesome little socks equals love coffee mug.
Thank you. Thank you. Anything further? No?
I have nothing further.
Yeah, so one thing I did want to say about this is that these socks will stay in our community.
One hundred percent.
A hundred percent, so they're going to people that are different service providers and perhaps the police and others might come in contact with. So thank you for working on it and making it happen.
Of course, and it's men, women, and children. So anyone in need gets a pair of socks.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Next is Mr. Kurt Holberg, here to address council regarding city code in the Alta-Inglewood Station P.U.D.
Good evening. My name's Kurt Holberg. I'm at thirty-six fifteen South Huron. Can I just read the statement so I try to keep under the timeline?
Yes.
Today you'll be voting on, to approve the first reading, Alta-Inglewood Station Plan Unit Development District Plan. We oppose the approval of this P.U.D. in its current form. My name is Kurt Holberg. I'm a registered professional engineer in Colorado, Wyoming, Utah, and Nevada. Our family firm is own property in the vicinity of the proposed Alta-Inglewood apartment complex since nineteen twenty-one. We own three buildings within one block of the proposed development, one of which faces the property on the south adjacent. We understand and support development in the area. We are local developers. Our property used to be greenhouses, and two of the buildings we own are developed on that property. We presented testimony on the P.U.D. at the planning and zoning and the City Council public hearings. I'd like to refer you to those presentations for details. From our communications with Wade Burkholder, there haven't been any changes to the P.U.D. since those hearings. We would remind you that the P.U.D. is not a site development plan. All future development only requires administrative review. If approved, all listed P.U.D. uses and modifications to the city building codes are approved with no further comment from planning and zoning, the City Council, or the public as long as the P.U.D. is active. For example, approval of this P.U.D. will allow the developer to build a ten-story apartment building with only one point three parking spaces per unit. That's not what they say they're gonna develop. But the P.U.D. allows it, and Inglewood staff would have to argue a significant deviation from the district plan to trigger council or planning review. If a use is stated in a plan, how can staff argue that there's a deviation? Should staff even be put in that situation? The developer stated that only administrative review is needed because the large insurance company financing this project will not finance the site development plan engineering if there is public review risk. The question is upfront, as I understand it, is upfront engineering cost, not the total project cost. The developer is taking advantage of the current two-step process to get broad approval of many uses with only one administrative review of all future plans. City staff is currently asking to change the code to eliminate this two-step process because of the complications caused by an undefined site plan in this and other P.U.D.s. You're not approving the proposed site plan today. It's only conceptual, and the developer can build anything the P.U.D. allows and staff approves. You are approving a development requiring only one point three parking spaces per unit versus the one point five-two your code requires for the proposed development. That's a hundred and one fewer parking spaces or twenty percent fewer than what your current code states for a three hundred and sixteen-unit development. They justify these requirements on a flawed parking study that only examined paid parking structures and did not consider free street parking. No study or analysis on the development's impact on street parking was completed. This development will negatively impact the surrounding area, just like the Alta-Bell Cherry Creek development has. Without site development plan, we or you do not know all the implications of what will be developed. Engineering for utilities, water, drainage, and sewer, as far as I understand, are not complete. Wood Partners is a developer. They will not be the ultimate owner. They will flip the property just like they did Alta-Cherry Creek. You and the local businesses, us, will be left to deal with the issues and development creates. I support development. This is what I do. I'm a mining engineer. I travel all over the world, supporting development of mines. All developers want to minimize their costs and will cut corners whenever possible. In mining, the world environmental and equator principles are forcing mining companies to build things right and to standards, and they do. Our city codes are there for a reason. You are the stewards of that city code. If a development is strong, it can always be built correctly without compromise to the codes or the standards. Approval of this P.U.D. in its current form will compromise the city standards for the sake of development. We ask you to vote against this P.U.D. in its current form and insist on a full development plan before approval. If necessary, send the P.U.D. back to the planning and zoning to get the parking up to code and complete a site development plan. The developer might have to finance the engineering themselves or find another source, but it will be done if it's viable project. I am sure the large insurer investor will be happy to invest in a project that has approved a site development plan. I have represented large insurers. They are happy to invest in strong projects.
Thank you for your comments, and we can read the last sentence, but thank you very much.
Thank you for your time.
I have a question. Councilmember Berentine?
Just briefly, I need to, I'm looking for it. In the, one, two, three, four, fifth paragraph, last sentence, it said, "City staff is currently asking to change the code to eliminate this two-step process because of the complications caused by an undefined site plan in this and other P.U.D.s." Where did you get that information?
I was at the last planning and zoning meeting.
You're gonna have to speak up.
At the last planning and zoning meeting on the, I think it was the eighth of January.
On January eighth, and they said that they were undergoing a process?
Yeah, it's in the minutes of that meeting.
I have not read the minutes of that meeting.
They're discussing, they're asking to remove the two-step process.
Alright, thank you. I will review that, appreciate it.
Sure. Wade can probably speak better to that than I would. Wade can probably speak better to that than I could.
Okay.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. Jerry Walker, an Inglewood resident who will address council regarding the Police Department.
Jerry Walker, forty-one eighty South Pearl Street, Inglewood, Colorado. Good evening, City Council, and fellow citizens who come and participate here. I would like to speak tonight. Can I move this a little closer so I can read it?
You should be able to tip it a bit closer.
I want to talk tonight about Ronald Singh. He's thirty-three years old, police officer out in California. Shot to death while in a traffic stop with an illegal alien. That was the county sheriff where he, how do I get back to the other screen? I'm sorry? How do I? Upper right. Alright. Okay, this one up here? There we go. Okay, now, how do I get back to here? This folder? Which folder? Okay, I'm back up. I'm back up. Thank you. Sorry about that.
At the bottom.
Go down to the gray box that says okay.
This is a chart of how things work here in Inglewood. I know that this is not what everybody believes, but this is the way it really works. On the top of this, which I can't see here, is the Police Department. They're the ones that make all the rules, decide whether we're gonna be a sanctuary city or not. After that, there are some of the boards which are not accountable to anyone. And that always amazes me when I find out there are boards not accountable. After that is staff. If you need to know what the rules actually are, call staff. They will take care of it. And then there's a museum across the way that we give all the money to. You would think that they would let Inglewood people in. And way down at the bottom and last is City Council. Now, what's interesting about this, and I know, okay, this is the immigration policy here in the city of Inglewood. It's written by the Inglewood Police Department. This is what makes us a sanctuary city. They're getting involved, they're not gonna be getting involved in immigration enforcement. It would be outside of their responsibility and mission. And that stance assuredly would not be interpreted to mean that we're providing sanctuary to those violating it. I'm sorry, what did it just say? The color black is black, and the next one is the color black is white. I mean, it contradicts itself. So I guess, knowing what I know about Inglewood right now, is we're not gonna worry about being a sanctuary city or not being a sanctuary city until we have a body. That's the way we work with floods, must be the same way we work with sanctuary cities. So once we get blood on our hands and someone is dead, killed by an illegal alien, then probably then, we may consider doing a study on whether or not we're gonna be a sanctuary city. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is C.N. Dickerson, an Inglewood resident who's here to address council, no topic given.
C.N. Dickerson, twenty-eight thirty-five South Pennsylvania Street, Inglewood, Colorado. Recently, in a study session, Councilmember Martinez made a point, "We are all big boys and girls, and we should sit and take it." I agree. Council should let citizens speak their opinions and criticisms and suggestions and listen and respond appropriately, and let citizens know that we, your bosses, are being heard and taken seriously. Do not interrupt speakers with inappropriate points of decorum and unsupported accusations. Do not ignore us. Let us know we have been heard and that you will address our concerns. This has been sorely lacking at the last few meetings. And yet, council chose to attack a committee and mischaracterize an incident at the last two meetings of that committee despite council's obvious failures in handling public forum and their own egregious conduct. The Code Enforcement Advisory Committee is composed of private, unelected volunteer citizens with limited responsibilities and little authority. The committee suffered a visitor's inappropriate, off-topic abuse for ten minutes, including personal insults and slanders of two council members, and yet we responded calmly and respectfully. Before our December meeting started, the same visitor started talking and refused to stop, demanded that she be recorded, and when the chair tried to call the meeting to order, she kept on talking despite repeated requests to stop and take a seat. Is it not the chair's job to set the agenda, conduct meetings according to Bob's rules, and keep the order? Why is council singling out this committee in this incident? Why is council calling the committees keeping order by asking our police presence to remove the disruptor? Why are you calling it dire and disturbing and having a chilling effect on other speakers? Would council allow this behavior? Of course you wouldn't. The mayor mentioned at that same meeting that, at the previous study session, maybe we should pause the committee and get a facilitator, help them get along and cooperate. Are you, counsel, jealous of what C.A.C. has accomplished in the last year? For example, the clear lines of communication we have opened with the public on behalf of code enforcement and the citizens? Are you jealous of how we cooperate with one another and the citizens in code enforcement? We work with each other calmly and without rancor or accusations. We respect each other, we respect and value our police liaison and our council liaisons, and have had many citizens speak before us. Never once have we called the police on each other or directed code enforcement to issue a violation on one of our members or another citizen. Is this criticism of C.A.C. by council hypocritical? Yes. Has council used the police to intimidate speakers who have been critical of council? Yes, again. Council members have called the police about other council members. Citizens who spoke critically of council have been investigated on no evidence other than the hysterical gossip of a citizen. A lot of unnecessary police presence has been imposed at meetings, at great cost and a chilling effect on citizens. Is it hypocritical of council to complain about a committee's actions in light of council's actual actions regarding public speaking before them? Yes, again. Perhaps council ought to pause. There's nothing in our bylaws, there's nothing in the ordinance that calls us or a job description that calls us to cooperate with anybody. But we do. We cooperate with each other, and we cooperate with citizens, and we cooperate with our police liaison, and we cooperate with code enforcement. If you want to save time, Mayor, don't cut council response immediately after public comments. Stop cramming so much into one meeting. Set more reasonable time limits on applicant speech in public hearings, or hold the hearings on another night. Listen to citizens more. Welcome criticism. Read and respond to emails. Hold some town halls for a change. Understand and consider what the minority and critics have to say. Question staff and developers. You don't do that nearly enough. Don't just rubber stamp or assume they have expertise. Stop projecting and diverting attention from your failures. To paraphrase an applicable verse, "Take the log out of your own eye before questioning the alleged speck in your critic's eyes." Pause.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, the next up is Mr. Doug Coan, an Inglewood resident here to address council regarding historic preservation.
Good evening. Doug Coan, thirty-fifty-one South Marion Street. Have two things to talk to you about tonight. The first, the Historic Society is working with the high school on the military memorial, the permanent one outside, and the event that's gonna take place on Memorial Weekend. I have two flyers in the back on the chair, and you'd be welcome to take one home with you. The, save the date, May twenty-sixth, Sunday, in the afternoon. That's when we're gonna have the ceremony. And the other form, I wanna ask a couple questions. Do you have somebody in your circle, your family, who has served in the military? Maybe your dad, your granddad, a mom, grandma? Maybe a classmate from school or the old guy across the street? Inglewood High School has the only permanent memorial that we know of at a high school in the whole country. Have you ever thought of doing something for that person as a tribute or a thank you? When you buy a paper brick in honor of that person, it would be a permanent marker. It would serve, it could be serviced from any time period, World War II, Korea, Vietnam, the Cold War, the Gulf Wars. The person does not need to be an Inglewood vet. Maybe you don't know someone, but you'd like to buy a thank you brick. You can do that too, or a business to say thank you. And then, next Monday, I wanna give you all permission to come to the Historic Society talk. And as a citizen of the year, I can do that, right? Deb Parker from the wastewater treatment plant, Water Renewal Partners, is gonna talk about keeping Inglewood's water safe. Have you ever asked yourself, when you pulled that stopper out of the kitchen sink, where does that go? And how is it treated? There's really strict rules on water purity, and our water treatment plant does a really good job of it. And I'd like to invite you all in the front and you all back here, too. There's some flyers on the back table about that, too, or the back chair. Two-thirty in the afternoon or six-thirty in the evening next Monday. I guess that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. That answer, scheduled public comment? Next is recognition of unscheduled public comment? Do we have an unlimited? Okay. Speakers must sign up unscheduled public comment at the beginning of the meeting out in the foyer. This is an opportunity for the public to address City Council, and there's an expectation that the presentation will be conducted in a respectful manner. Council may ask questions for clarification, but there will not be any dialogue. Please limit your presentation to three minutes. Time for unscheduled public comment may be limited. Time for unscheduled public comment may be limited to 45 minutes, and if limited, shall be continued after the general discussion. Written materials for the presentation to council may be submitted to the city clerk as a speaker approaches the podium, and a USB port is available, again, for public presentation. So, first up tonight is Mr. Chris Dewis, here to speak about a video that he made today.
4884 South Lincoln. As I was driving down Hampton, I noticed something that caught my eye. I thought it was an art project. Thousands of others that drive down Hampton through our beautiful city also see, have seen this. As a long-term resident of six years, I've dealt with ongoing dangerous issues not to be addressed. I see problems getting worse by the day, so I made a little video for you. The reason I made that video is because if I speak my mind, you would not want to hear what I say. My words would not come out the way you want them to. And then you would say I'm a bad guy for decorum. Do you have any questions? Because of these issues, those pictures were in my, taken in my alley today. But they've been ongoing. I've emailed code enforcement, they're still there. And if something doesn't get done, I will make this go viral.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink has a question for you.
Thanks, Mr. Dewis. Good to see you. What are some recommendations that you would have for us that you know that we're currently not already undertaking to address some of these issues?
It's simple. If code enforcement would just address the problems, all they have to do is drag down my alley. Now, a week ago, or a few weeks ago, I saw code enforcement drive down my alley, so I tried to catch her to, she was looking, she was looking at my property. So, I tried to catch her and ask her to address the problems that I had emailed. Well, she called dispatch and said I was chasing her. So, the last time I was here, Watson came up to me and asked, "Why were you chasing my code enforcement?" I said I wasn't, I was trying to ask her a question. So, the dispatch said, "Abort, abort, come back to base," because she thought, she was fearing for her life.
Okay. And then, were the, thank you for that information. Was the, was the collection of photos taken in your district or near your home, or were they spread out across?
In my alley only.
Your alley, very good.
For what, what got me going today is when I was doing some business errands, and I was driving down Hampton, and right at the fountain, there's, like, I thought it was an art project, so I stopped to look at it. It was like, I don't know what it is. It's like a homeless person built it right on top of the deal over there.
Okay.
I took pictures and I wanted, and so then I thought, okay, I'll take pictures of my alley and share it with you guys.
Thank you, Mr. Dewis. This is good information. Thank you very much. We can.
Thank you. Next up is Mr. J.J. Marjata.
Good evening, citizens of Inglewood. My name is J.J. Marjata. I live at 29 East Radcliffe Avenue. This evening, I come to you with a couple of different issues. First of all, I'd like to talk about the recognition of scheduled public comment. The mayor says that the deadline to sign up to speak at the scheduled public comment is Wednesday by 5:00 PM prior to the meeting through the city clerk's office. I have signed up, I had signed up month or weeks ago to be at this meeting for five minutes. So, you are going to need to talk to your city clerk about why that has not happened and why I'm sitting in a three-minute hold. So, with that being said, I want to talk about the hypocrisy of city council in this city. I expect you, city managers and the city council, you're supposed to be our leaders. You're supposed to be the ones that are protecting every dollar that goes through. You are our eyes, you are our ears, you are supposed to be responsible. These people out here that sit at these podiums and everything else come to you and expect you to do something, and you don't. You do it time and time again. You don't reply to emails, you don't reply to requests, you let your employees ignore the requests of people. Now, this evening, I have brought some more information forward, and as you guys know, I have brought the Purchasing and Policy Procedure Manual to you once before. And I asked you to hold the city manager accountable, the previous city manager, and you didn't. He spent $236,000, and in here, page number 14, says "Failure to Comply." Any employee that is failure to comply can and will be charged with a civil or criminal action. He spent $236,000 without city approval. Now, that doesn't seem like, hey, you know, that's fine, probably was a mistake, we let it happen once, maybe twice, but you know what? You keep letting the city do what they want. You're supposed to be the managers. If you worked for me, you'd be fired because you're incompetent, clearly incompetent. Now, this evening, I found that you've spent $28,754 to the Investigation Law Group. You should look into this, council members, to see if there's, what's going on. There was three individuals that were fired. From what I understand, money disappeared out of the Utilities Billing Department. I have here that somebody was terminated on 9/20/2018 as part of the investigation. Now, I asked for the investigation documents. All I got was a checkbook or just the check. Now, where's the report? Why was it not redacted and handed out accordingly? I'm tired of the lies, I'm tired of the malfeasance, I'm tired of the fiscal irresponsibility of the city council, the city manager, and the people, and including the city attorney, because your city attorney approved this. And if she approved that, again, that goes to page 14, Failure to Comply.
Your time is up, you need, and you finished with a sentence or so.
Yes. I expect you to hold whoever approved that payment responsible. And if they are not held responsible in the next 48 hours, I will be going to Arapahoe County Courts and filing charges.
Thank you, Mr. Marjata. Councilmember Berantine has a question for you.
Could you please share your open records request and what you had in your hand with the council, please? If you'd give it to the clerk so that it could be sent us or email it to us?
I mean, yeah, I mean, sure, I have no problem with that. I mean, you could just look at the email that they didn't respond to that says there was things attached, there was nothing attached to, but except for the check.
Okay. And if you would include the section of the code that you're saying was violated with the $28,000 spending, and then, thanks.
I do not have that with me this evening, but I can get that information. I can actually show you on City Code and I can show you in the Policy and Procedure Procurement Manual.
I would like both sites, if you could.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you. Up next is, I believe, Dustin Jones, here to speak about Alta Inglewood.
Apologize for the handwriting.
Okay. Is I right, Dustin Jones?
You were correct.
Okay.
Members of council, Mayor Mayor Protam, my name is Dustin Jones. I'm here to speak to you on Alta Inglewood Station. I'm with Ogilvy Properties, we're the current owner. My address is 2601 Blake Street. After our presentation in December, it was very clear that both the community and this council had questions remaining and suggestions for the proposed PUD that needed to be addressed. Given this, we were unclear what could be done within the ordinance language and compliance with the code, so we requested a meeting with city staff so that we could better understand the process. Given the council presentation, which occurred on December 17th and the subsequent holidays, we weren't able to get together with staff until that first week in January. By this point, we knew that we would not be able to adequately address council's concerns in time for the January 7th council meeting, so we did ask staff to request a delay in the first reading to tonight, which you all accommodated. After hearing the comments from the public in the city council, we strongly asked the council and encouraged the council to refer the proposed PUD back to the Planning Commission this evening so that we may address these concerns that were raised, and most importantly, in a public forum. We hear loud and clear that this PUD district plan needs to be as open and transparent as possible, and therefore, we would welcome the additional opportunity to address the community's concerns through this process. Having said that, I believe that you will be asked to identify the items that will be referred back to Planning Commission as areas of concern. Our understanding is that these will include parking, number of units, building height. It is our understanding that the main concern of this council is that the site plan that is being proposed is what will ultimately be built. In order to do this, we would propose restricting this development in a way that it, that does this by creating a 70-foot height maximum, parking language that ensures that the 471 spaces be provided to accommodate the 316 units. The number of proposed units would not exceed 316. Any deviations of this would, in fact, come back to council. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I think Mayor Protam, you're in a...
I was going to ask a question. My question is, if, if we refer this back to planning and zoning, are you willing to come forward with a site development plan, not just, not just the piece that you came forward with, the district plan?
As we've, as we tried to portray in the last meeting, our, our challenge is really asking our purchaser, because we're the current owner, to spend a million dollars at risk without current zoning in place. So, that's, that's the challenge that we've, we've had doing that, agreeing to that.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Questa also has a question.
Thank you, mayor. And I just want to be crystal clear on the record that you, as the applicant for the Alta PUD, are requesting this council to send it back to planning and zoning this evening. Correct. Thank you.
Thank you, that's all. Thank you. Next up is Marius Peckner, maybe, here to speak about Alta Inglewood. Did I get that right?
Good. Good evening, council members and mayor. My name is Marcus Peckner. I'm also here on behalf of the Alta Inglewood PUD. My address is 4700 East Sixth Avenue Parkway, Denver, Colorado. I'm here tonight on the other half of the PUD, the Wood Partners. I'm here on their behalf this evening. And as you certainly recall and just heard from Ogilvy, we're here to speak in unison tonight in this request. Wood Partners would like to respectfully request from all of you that you refer this matter, this proposed PUD, back to the Planning Commission. It was clear, frankly, from our discussion in December, I think a number of us were engaged in that public hearing, and thank you for taking all the time that you did to really go through the issues. It was clear that there were a few remaining issues or some issues that we heard, and we thought that it was appropriate, frankly, to give council, the mayor, and the community the certainty that they desired. As you heard from Mr. Holberg earlier in testimony, he mentioned words like "broad" and that there was too much flexibility. And as you recall, we started to have a dialogue that night about how we could tighten our site plan, so there wasn't that flexibility. So, what we're suggesting we want to build is actually what we will build. So, we're asking that you refer back with those restrictions so we can actually come forward with a site plan that is effectively limited and restricted to those items. So, again, as Dustin mentioned, we would like to propose that 70-foot maximum height, as we had talked about in the public hearing, parking language that ensures a minimum of 471 parking spaces, that's something that we all talked about, and again, limiting the unit count to 316, so we're not changing that ratio at all. We're locking in the site plan. The other thing that we heard, and frankly, all of you heard from me, you really valued the community input and continued community involvement in this project. As you may have mentioned, we had over 750 unique community touchpoints in this process. We have been working on this for well over a year. We did three community meetings and then hosted meet and greets, walked the community, sent out notice, hosted lunches, but clearly, we needed to do more. Although we had a lot of speakers in support, there were still questions, again, on parking, number of units, and the height. We want to take that, we want to give the community that certainty, take that flexibility out of that. So, again, we're respectfully requesting, along with the applicant, that you refer this back to PNC so we can tighten those elements and give you the certainty that you expressed and that also members of the community expressed. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions and thank you very much.
Great, there are a few here. Councilmember Berantine.
I never heard 70. The PUD was for 100 in that PUD, which there was some questions about, but what I heard was that the intention was 50, that, and I heard that numerous times. Did I misunderstand?
So, we had a, we had a discussion, actually, we were talking around in the mid 60, 67 feet, right, to allow kind of the flexibility of the plan that we were proposing. We put a cap of 70 feet because it doesn't allow there to be the height. Mr. Holberg mentioned it could go to 100 feet. We want to put that height, so that's very consistent with the conceptual plan that we put forward. I think the other thing is, councilwoman, by limiting the number of units and parking requirements, we're not changing that envelope of the building. We're respecting that envelope, we're putting a maximum height on that. So, we were talking approaching 70 feet, and that's what we're suggesting.
Okay. I just need a clarification.
Sure.
Both at the public hearing, at the public hearing and on the record, several times when asked, "It's 100 feet," we were told that we're only going to build to 50. Is that what was said that night?
No, that's not. We were showing a site plan that was above that, and we're showing, this is the limit. Actually, you and I, if I remember correctly, were having a dialogue of 67 feet, the building we were showing. So, we've added just to have that additional three feet to allow flexibility where the kind of building design. But we were talking about this. This is consistent with the same site plan that we presented as a concept plan.
I'll, I'll go back and listen to it because I believe it was 50, and I just want to make that, since that was a public hearing, and I'm confused.
Yep, same site plan, staying completely consistent.
There is no site plan.
Concept.
Thank you, Councilmember Questa.
Thank you. Could you please repeat the total number of parking spaces? Is that 471?
That is correct. We had, yes.
And that includes both guest parking and tenant parking?
That is correct, sir, yes.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Mayor Protam Russell.
And my question also is, would you consider also doing the traffic study before coming back?
Yes, we've already actually been working on that traffic study. As you know, we had turned that in. We've done further analysis, frankly, since our public hearing. We know we can't present new information, so absolutely, we're working on that data all of the time and happy to re-present that information.
Thank you.
I have a question as well. I don't see if there's any, so you did, there were a few people here that night that I think you hadn't spoken to before, so you're going to go back to them as well and, and talk with them and some of the folks, at least one tonight?
Absolutely.
Would that be in your plan?
We're happy to meet with Mr. Holberg. We've had a great dialogue throughout this process. I think, mayor, there probably were maybe one or two folks that we had not seen previously. We will do that again. We took everyone's kind of contact information that we could get that evening. We will, again, I've already contacted the Elks about hoping and hosting an open house for us. We'll go back to the south and do another meet and greet where we flyer the entire neighborhood. We will go back through and do that outreach. We think it's vital, frankly, for us to be good neighbors, and we'll continue to do that.
All right, thank you very much. There's no further questions, thank you. Next is Ms. Vicki Hoffman, here to speak... Ms. Vicki Hoffman, here to speak about miscellaneous.
Good evening, Vicki Hoffman, owner of 4630 South Bannock. Last week, I attended the City of Littleton Council meeting, and I just wanted to let you know that I was greeted there with a nice man who asked if I wanted to speak, if I wanted to sign up. I was not greeted by metal detectors and three police. They had coffee and snacks and worked really well together. And I am really frustrated at this point. I do have many things. I believe it was today I emailed you a list of your council requests for last year, which, you know, there were 42 unanswered council requests. Forty-two. I know that you've seen it. Really? This is how we keep records of water main breaks on graph paper and handwritten writing? This is scientific? No. I'd also ask tonight why an employee for the City of Inglewood, who worked for 20 years and three months, I believe, Larry Nemo, why he was fired? Why is Benny Statesman out of communications? Why Daisy U is gone? Three employees in two weeks. Three. If that's acceptable to you, that's great. I personally think that's a huge indicator of leadership. And the leadership is, is poorly lacking right now. I also believe, unfortunately, that, you know, I put in a core request and about previous employees, whether they were terminated, self-termed, promoted, demoted within the last 30 days. I was told by the city clerk that that was not a core request and that I would need to talk to HR about it. I have it on my phone. I will be more than happy to email it to you. That's unacceptable. As of August of 2018, there had been 18 people that had already left the city. Now Larry was my key guy. I praise that man. He did his job. He was four years shy of retirement. I believe he knows a lot of things. I do plan on getting in touch with him because I do believe. I'd also ask you as to why councilmember Sierra's cellphone is being paid at $35 a month and the rest of you are not. Why are we, as taxpayers, paying for a city council member's cellphone usage? And I'm also here tonight to let you know that three houses on a coma are being rented out, and I do intend to go talk to them to make sure that they know that they are in a death trap right now. And that Calibre also contacted me today. Finally. It indicated that I had gotten a postcard.
Thank you. I see no questions for you. Thank you. Councilmember Wink does have one for you, Ms. Hoffman.
I apologize. I just, I, Ms. Hoffman, I didn't hear the very last.
They, they said that Calibre called me today and said that they had gotten my information from the flood survey postcard, which I indicated to them I had never received. So now they want to meet with me next week. Their study's already done.
Interesting. Thank you.
Councilmember Berantine also has a question for you.
What information did they say they received from you?
That I completed the survey.
Did they tell you what information that they got from you from the survey?
My contact information. And the only person that could do that was Director DeAndrea.
All right.
Because I never did fill out a postcard because I never received one.
Thanks.
Thank you. Next up is Ms. Tammy Williamson, and she's here to speak about enforcing some of the zones on Washington.
Hi, I'm Tammy Williamson. I live at 4198 South Washington Street, and I'm here to ask council today to enforce R1C zoning in regards to 4188 South Washington Street. It is zoned R1C. It has been forever, and yet, there's an Airbnb and apartments and a garage rental still operating back there. And there's really no reason why they should still be, because we are zoned one family per lot. And not only do I have a motel going on next door, I have a garage being rented out as a residence. And I've emailed you and I've, I've told, been here many times telling you all the problems I've had over 15 years, just about, just for the garage, and now with the Airbnb. And I'm here to ask you if you could force code to enforce the code. It's as simple as that. I mean, maybe, you know, if they don't want to do their job, why are they working for Inglewood? It's very simple. Like this, this gentleman back here called you the stewards of the codes. Can you, can you please be stewards of the codes and enforce the R1C zoning at 4188 South Washington? Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantine has a question for you.
Could you list what you believe the violations are that are violating the code?
Yeah, there, the garage apartment that's been operating for over 15 years.
I didn't hear you, the garage what?
The makeshift garage apartment that they've been running for 15 years, the Airbnb. And plus, it has been, in the, in the beginning, the guy who bought it turned it into a three-unit triplex.
The main house, you're saying, is turned into an apartment, the main house?
He turned it into an apartment complex before he turned the entire house over to an Airbnb party house.
And when was that?
That was in May.
All right. Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Councilmember Wink has a question.
Ms. Williamson, thank you. Could you share with, with council via the clerk's office, documentation showing us, this will help us rectify this, but documentation proving that for 15 years, the garage has been, been managed in the format and the, the main house as well? Just showing the length of time based on what you're saying tonight?
I actually already have provided you with that information. I emailed everybody copies of the online postings from the owner, three, three separate.
15 years' length? Okay.
No, where, where he had, he acknowledges that the, that the unit was already there, and it goes into detail everything he did to the place without any permit, and his plans to do it, that having, knowing full well that it was R1C, and he couldn't do any of that.
Thank you. Is it, is it Councilmember Wink you finished? All right.
I can resend those, that email, if you'd like.
You certainly are welcome to do that.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Next up is Ms. Elaine Holt. No topic given.
Elaine Holt, 3333 South Lincoln Street, number 706. I don't have to have a topic before I come here. I get one every time I come here. I get several. I could talk for a day and a half. Solid. Because you haven't gotten the word. You got part of it, that you need to be afraid. And that's why we have the scanner, and that's why some people go around with police escort. And it, in the beginning, when that happened, I thought, oh, this is drama. But you know, ever since I got phone calls when that episode happened to me last month in this city, in city, in the open city meeting, I am getting a sense that there's a lot of anger, because there are so many things, even things I found out new tonight, just listening to people that are doing other research on their own city. There is so, I, I realized that all of a sudden, you had a reason to be afraid, and it wasn't drama. And then I wondered, well, why? We never had this before here. We've had full houses and nothing serious ever happened, and nobody had to feel that they were insecure. But then somebody that phoned me gave me the clue, and it went right over my head. Believe me, not too much goes over my head, but this did. And evidently, they saw that episode that you presented here against me as a beginning of something else that they didn't want to happen. They didn't want to lose the fire department, and believe me, we didn't have to. They didn't want to sell Depot Park for $30,000, and we didn't have to. They're wondering what else, and when they got, this is, this is what they saw. I missed it. They saw that they were going to lose their right to speak before the city council their grievances and to get answers for their questions. And I thought to my, my God in heavens, this is what's creating so much anger. Yes, and you saw it tonight. How many people spoke tonight? If I were sitting up there, I would be shaking in my boots. You have every right to be afraid, but I want to tell you something about that. When I thought about it seriously, if somebody wants to do somebody harm, you're never going to know it. Never going to know it. Because people who think that way, who have that mentality, are very shrewd. Many of them have very high IQs. That's what I'm telling you tonight.
Your time is up. Please finish.
I want you to hear my words and be, you've gotten some confirmation of what you were feeling.
Thank you. Any questions for Ms. Holt? Seeing none, that will end our unscheduled comment time. Next up is Agenda Item 8, Communications, Proclamations and Appointments. And we have a proclamation tonight in radon action month in Colorado. So, council, I'd like to receive, or have a motion to approve the proclamation supporting radon action month in Inglewood, Colorado.
I move to approve supporting radon action month in Inglewood, Colorado.
Thank you. Is there a second?
A second.
Thank you. Any discussion?
I will read the proclamation. Supporting radon action month in Inglewood, whereas radon is an invisible, odorless radioactive gas that threatens the health of our citizens and their families, whereas radon is a leading environmental cause of cancer mortality in the US, and the eighth-leading cause of cancer mortality overall, whereas the Colorado Rocky Mountain region has been ranked Zone 1, an area with the highest radon potential possible by the US Environmental Protection Agency, whereas Colorado residential radon data has shown 50% of Colorado homes tested as being at or above the US Environmental Protection Agency radon action level of 4.0 PCI/L, that's a picocures per liter of air, whereas any home in Inglewood, Colorado may have elevated levels of radon, even if homes in the same neighborhood do not, whereas supporting recommended radon practices and policies to reduce radon exposure is important to protect our community's health and welfare, whereas testing for radon is simple and inexpensive, whereas identified radon problems can be fixed, whereas the Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment, the US Environmental Protection Agency, and the American Lung Association are supporting efforts to encourage Americans to test their homes for radon, have elevated levels of radon reduced, and have new homes built with radon-resistant features. Now therefore, I lend to Olson Mayor of Inglewood, Colorado, do hereby proclaim January 1st through the 31st official National Radon Action Month in Inglewood, and witness of that here on the 22nd day of January 2019. Council, I brought this forward on request by this organization, as well as Mayor Protam, thought it was a good thing to bring forward. It's, radon is one of the killers that goes really silently through our homes, and we don't recognize it. I have folks in our neighborhood, spotty, on and off. Our home has high radon. We've had it mitigated. Just, it's a good reminder to all of us to be checking out with this, and as a cancer survivor, of which my cancer is, is really strongly linked in studies to environmental issues such as this. I just want to be encouraging our citizens to make sure that you're in the decision-making mode of your own homes. So, any other comments about this? If not, please vote to accept.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show six eyes.
Thank you. Next up is, we have a lot in eight, which is Proclamations and Appointments. Our appointments go quite long here. And so what I wonder if we could do, this is okay for us to do, is are we, are there any that we have trouble with, first off, to discuss, and then we'll have a motion to approve those that we think we can move forward on and then have a vote on them. So are there any discussion items here? Councilmember Berantine?
We have a member being appointed that we can't do. We have a member being appointed to a quasi-judicial board and also to another board. That's not the policy of this council.
Yes, could you make that clear, which ones they are? Because there is one.
That would be to the Planning and Zoning Board, Mr. Hesling. And he is also appointed to the Cultural Arts Commission, which is the board that he asked to be appointed to. There was at the meeting, we were told at the meeting, that another position was available for planning and zoning. I believe that that should just be put to the next round and should not have been filled without notification to the public. That aside, Mr. Hesling, per our policy, can't serve on both.
So you're, you're suggesting it be pulled off of plan, or Cultural Arts and put on to planning and zoning only?
I'm suggesting that Mr. Hesling asked to be put on Cultural Arts. That's what he was put on. He is filling a spot on planning and zoning that we did not know about and was not notified to the public, and that we put that third spot onto the next round, and that we appoint Mr. Hesling to the board that he asked to be appointed to, which was the Cultural Arts Commission.
Right. Councilmember, Mayor Protam Russell?
And actually, that's what I just, can I make a motion that we remove you from, from the list? And go ahead and?
Remove you?
Remove you, the letter.
Not me?
No, not you. The letter you.
The letter you.
Yes.
So, all right, so that would be, so, and Councilmember Sierra?
I was going to say, so I, I'm looking at, at Mark Hesling, he's stated as an alternate within the Cultural Arts Commission. So if we were to move him to a regular member of the CAC, we would have to bump someone else. So would it make more sense to just make Mark Hesling a permanent member of the Planning and Zoning Commission?
Thank you for that. I, that would be my recommendation, too, when I saw this. I think we were trying to figure out a way to fill all these. The alternate for the cultural arts certainly could go unfilled. Mark Hesling was clear that he would be willing to do this. We didn't give everybody their first choice, and he was unaware of the possibilities. We also had a conversation about the openings and said, wow, isn't this fortuitous that this came out tonight, so now we can fill them? Councilmember Berantine?
Again, the position that was open was never acknowledged. It happened after the cutoff time for the applications, and normally, what we would do is just go ahead and let that position go so that we could give everybody an opportunity. It was already unfortunate that the planning and zoning positions were not notified properly at all, let alone that all of a sudden, a third one came up at the last minute. And I think, in fairness and transparency for the public, that they have an opportunity to apply for the openings in a timely basis and not just something that happens that night. We would have to address that piece of it. Mr. Hesling asked to be on the Cultural Arts Commission, and so I'm, I'm a little confused at why there would be a push to do a third position that wasn't notified for, that he, that he never asked to be on.
Mayor Protam Russell?
Actually, I would just like to clarify a little bit what Councilmember Berantine was saying. There were actually three positions on planning and zoning that didn't, actually, two of them did not get notified, and so nobody had applied. But then there was a third position that just came open, and I think that we should not just stick someone in there, to be sticking someone in there. It was, that third position came open after the applications were due, and so I am... It was, that third position came open after the applications were due and so I am moving that we remove, I move we remove the letter U from the appointment process. I'm okay about approving everything else other than that, but I move that we remove the letter U.
A second.
Okay, you have a second. Okay, discussion. Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate the comments that have been shared and I think it is fair to enable the whole of the community, knowing that this position's available or what's available on planning and zoning, which typically is a very popular board slash commission for our citizens, to have the opportunity to apply specifically for it. So I think that is only fair. And I will also say, just to keep the facts straight, that Mr. Hesling, Mr. Mark Hesling, said to us in the meeting that he's absolutely happy to serve on any board or commission where we felt that he would be useful to us. He's very excited to work with the city of Inglewood and very skilled in many areas. So, as was the case with a few different citizens, he did indicate to us that he was happy to serve on other boards. So let's do keep that in mind, which we discussed when we made these initial comments on these positions. But Mayor Protam, I do think that's fair to remove you for tonight. Letter U.
So Council, I have a question then, if we're going to do that, which is at the pleasure of you all. We have actually three openings and one alternate, correct?
For planning and zoning.
For planning and zoning. And do I have that correct, interim city manager?
Or?
So as she's checking, what I want to ask is, because this is a really important quasi judicial board, would you be willing to entertain, as we did another time when we had an open board, we invited people to come forward before the six-month mark? I'm just worried that they won't have enough people to make a decision if we vote later tonight or not to refer something back to P&amp;Z. I'm just very concerned that we have enough to actually manage the business of the city.
I would have to do further investigation to be sure, but I think there are three openings and you're appointing, possibly appointing, one person plus one alternate. If they need a quorum, the alternate would automatically move up into a full voting member.
Yeah. Councilmember-
I have information on what you just said.
Go ahead, Councilmember Berantine.
Did we not already move the alternate up? I believe that that was part of what we, is right on top of this?
Well, there's an alternate member in letter W in the list.
Let me put my glasses on.
I'm reading that right to appoint.
Appointment of B, Appointment of Planning and Zoning Commission Alternate Member to Regular Member, Carolyn Marshall.
Plus number W, or letter W.
Letter W.
Is an alternate member that you're recommending tonight.
Yeah, but I think what Councilmember Berantine is rightfully asking is-
Right.
We are pointing one up, we are putting the alternate up. And so she's asking, I believe, then is that three more on top of that or just two more on top of that plus an alternate?
I think it's two more on top of that.
Okay, then I think she's right in what you're asking.
Okay, so then, and what is the consistency of the board? What's the membership of the board?
I don't know. I can look it up.
Okay.
Do you mean how many or, is that what you're asking, Councilmember Berantine?
Yeah.
Okay, how many are on the board and whether or not they have a quorum?
She doesn't know right now.
I was just asking you because I want to know exactly what we're trying to get at. So I agree.
She answered my question.
Thank you. I was just asking a question. Appreciate it. So we have before us, Mayor Protam Russell.
Actually, I absolutely agree. This is not because Mr. Hesling is not qualified to serve here and does not want to. I believe that he does, but it really is all about the openness and transparency. I do believe that the board will be okay. I think I was a little bit confused also if there were three positions in addition to the alternate that we were moving up. But there is one person in this list that has, that we would be appointing as an alternate member who would, if there was a lack of quorum, would be able to fill in for the next five months. I don't think it would make that board not be able to do their job.
Sure, that's, I agree with that, except that she also did not put that down. And so we're putting her on something as an alternate, which makes her by default in it. So I would prefer to have Mark Hesling in that and put, so that the alternate becomes someone who we know is ready and able to do it, has the sort of background that I think could be very useful with it. Interim City Manager?
On the advice of staff and community development, if you move Carolyn up from alternate to regular member, you need one more regular member and an alternate to fill the spots. There are a total of nine people on the board.
All right. Thank you. So we're actually just looking for one and then a second for his alternate. Thank you. Councilmember Berantine.
When is the next, when is, for the city manager, when is the next time we're going to be appointing? When is the next round for applications due?
My understanding is that that's in May with decisions in June for appointment in July.
All right. And we had a lot of other members that we interviewed that said that they would be interested in the position as well during the meeting, during the interviews for us to find out there's another position and start just putting this in. To Councilmember Wink's point, I think we need to be a little bit more open, give people some, a timely basis and transparency so that they can be appointed. Again, has nothing to do with Mr. Hesling. There were several people who said that they would serve on more than one board. My concern and my objection from the beginning is that we have this as it is set up to vote. We already are violating our policy by having Mr. Hesling on a quasi judicial board and another board. I would like to make sure that we are more diligent about that not happening in the future because that's not what we agreed to or kind of discussed that night. And that we are, we had two other situations where boards, it came to our attention that boards and commissions, either somebody was no longer able to serve and we don't want to start filling them those nights. So I don't want to start a precedent with that.
So I, Council, and maybe city attorney can weigh in or the city interim manager, is it, I'm concerned about this board having enough people and if we're just throwing people into it, which is what some seem to claim, that would mean also not accepting Kate Fuller for that position as an alternate because she never put it down either. So is there a policy that says we cannot recreate tonight some of what we're doing? Is that impossible to do or can we decide we're going to fill these because we know now and these people and can? And if not, can we have a special meeting to then fill them to make sure we've got people who want to be on them and can serve and make it open?
My understanding about the process is it is set by council and decided by council. The boards and commissions, the membership is set by code, but the process by which they are chosen is entirely up to you.
Okay. So Council, I can see why we'd want to have more people apply for this and I'm fine with opening it up. I would like to make sure that we do that within the next month and not hamper this, the Planning and Zoning Commission. So that would be my preference if we go for doing what you suggested in your motion. Mayor Protam, I'm fine with that, but I also would like to have a second follow-up of that. Councilmember Sierra.
Yeah, I agree. I would prefer to have a full commission as soon as possible.
Okay. Councilmember Berantine, do you have anything new to add to this?
I'd like to call the questions because we're repeating ourselves.
Mayor Protam, you're being called for the question.
That's fine.
You made the motion.
We, I move that we call the question. I mean, we have to vote on that because the question has been called.
Okay, so folks, a yes vote on this means we will not be putting, so do you want to restate it? It's, we are not going to fill it?
No, a yes vote on this, we are calling the question, means we'll vote on whether we'll remove you or not. It's really a motion to end discussion.
Okay. Vote is for removing the letter U. Please vote.
Is the vote for moving the letter U or is the vote for calling the question?
Calling the question is first.
Okay.
But I don't know if we have to, do we have to vote on calling the question?
If somebody calls the question, if somebody calls the question, we need to vote.
You can call the question, so let's vote. Are we stopping discussion? That's what I believe we're voting on.
Please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show six ayes.
Okay, now Councilmember, or Mayor Protam.
The motion was to remove the letter U from the list.
Please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show five ayes and one nay, the one nay being Mayor Wilson.
All right. So the next piece of this that I would like to suggest, maybe we can wait till the end. I would like to suggest that we set another time to actually fill it, but I'll wait till we get through the rest of these. Mayor Protam, would you like to move to approve the rest of them?
Yes, I move to approve, is it 8B through AE. But really, it probably only needs to be B through D because D is all the resolutions. I was going to ask a question about that.
I was told we could do the whole thing, but do we need to pull D out because it's the resolutions? It's just resolution appointing members. I think that's really sort of a mistake in there.
I mean, I think you can do the whole thing.
Okay, so I move to-
The attorney is nodding yes, so go ahead.
Okay, I move to approve 8B through AE.
I'll second that. Thank you. Any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show six ayes.
For a point of order on this, either the city clerk or city attorney, is it possible to at this point make a motion to actually suggest another time to fill the positions that are there so we have a full? Probably save that to Councilmembers' choice. Okay, thank you. Moving on to consent agenda, approval of ordinances on first reading, could I have a, and actually, there's 9A1, 2, and C1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6. Are any of those ones which you would like to pull? Seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve. I move, Mayor Protam and then Mr. Questa.
I do have a couple that I want to pull. I want to pull 9C, 4, and 5. And then I'm trying to decide, I think I just had a question about the intergovernmental-
Let's pull it just to say-
Okay, all right. Which would be 9A2.
Okay. Councilmember Questa.
9C2, Mayor. Thank you.
Okay. So we're pulling 9A2, 9C2, 4, and 5. Could I have, is that correct?
We had 9C, 4, and 5, and then 9C2.
But I heard A2 as well.
9A2. 9A2. 9C2, 4. 9C4, 9C5.
Which is what I said. Yes. Okay, all right. So a motion to approve the others, which we need to name them.
I move to approve consent agenda items 9A1, 9C1, 9C3, 9C6.
Correct. Thank you. I have a second.
A second.
Thank you. Please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show six ayes.
All right, let's start back with 9A2 since they're in order, if you don't mind. Councilmember Questa, so this is CB, intergovernmental agreement with Colorado Department of Transportation for the transportation demand management grant funding. And I believe that we have Mr. Voberl here to answer any of your questions.
Very good. Good evening, sir. And I'm just getting to my notes in the appropriate spot in that particular recap. It's more on the financial implication where it looks like we were quoted at purchasing this product at $124 a gallon. And then in the financial implications, it states that this will not exceed $100,000. So it doesn't appear that we know the volume of it that we're going to purchase because if we knew the volume, we'd be able to have a final total?
I think we have the wrong number. And my project is the IGA with CDOT for the Oxford Avenue First and Last Mile Connections Bicycle Lanes and Sheroes Markings Project.
And 9C2 is Tom Brennan is the staff member assigned to this.
Actually, I think we were doing 9A2. Is that what we were doing?
9A2 is what you asked for.
I asked for 9C2.
No, he asked for C2.
Pardon me.
I asked for-
You asked for A2.
I asked for A2. The question that I have is, when do we anticipate that construction will begin and when will it be complete?
So we will start, we're working on, we're getting this IGA approved. I believe typically that would take five to, or six months with CDOT after you've approved it here tonight. And then we could start right away at that time. So I'm thinking in August or September start time for this project and to finish it before the end of the fall.
So when this all happens, are we going to move those little bump outs on Oxford?
No, they're just going, they're fine as they are according to our engineer, Chris Vogel saying from OV Consultants.
Okay, so the bottom line is we're just waiting on the money as soon as, as soon as CDOT approves this and we get the funding.
Project is designed.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Wouldn't you like to make a motion to approve?
I move to approve 9A2.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show six ayes.
All right, next up is the 9C2. Sorry, Mr. Questa, I confused you. Alan Water Treatment Plant Sodium Hydrochloride, is that the correct one?
Yes, thank you.
Here to present, or to answer questions is Staff Director Tom Brennan.
Good evening, Mr. Brennan. So going back to the summary provided to council, the quote we've received on the sodium hypochloride is $124 a gallon. And then it says our total expenditure will not exceed $100,000. So do we not know the total volume, the total number of gallons we'll be purchasing?
No, we do not. That is based on production. The more water we produce, the more chemicals we will use.
And my follow-up question would be, so how do we know that we'll not exceed $100,000? Is that just based on past production that we just know it won't get near there?
That is correct. We do, we look back at the last three years of production records.
Can you tell me what our highest point was over the past three years, if you know it offhand?
I do not know that off the top. You mean highest daily?
Yeah, I would say what is the most we've spent on the past on this product?
I do not know that at this time.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilmember, or Mayor Protam Russell, I think was-
So my question was on this one, how, well, I think this question was already asked. How often do we get deliveries? Do we only prove this once a year? I mean, obviously, in my reading of this, this was for the entire year.
Correct.
So we're approving the $100,000 and you will just get deliveries throughout the year as you need them. Is that correct?
Yes. And if we need more, we will come back for an supplemental appropriation. But we do not believe we will.
Okay. All right. So otherwise, you're doing it for every, if you did it for every $4,000 or 4,000 gallon delivery, it would only be $4,000 and you wouldn't have to come for that approval, right?
Correct. But cumulatively, it's over the max limit. That's why these two chemicals, we have quite a few chemicals that are under the limit that we are not bringing forward.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Councilmember Berantine.
I think Councilmember Questa asked a really good question. If you don't know what the average, I mean, if you're averaging it over three years, but you don't know what your normal use is, how do you know that the $100,000 is going to be enough? And the reason I ask that is because I certainly don't want you tying up money in a budget that could be maybe used for something else. So how, how are we supposed to make the determination?
The water production superintendent comes up with that number every year for me. I am not daily involved in the plan and chemical ordering. That's the superintendent's job. So, yes, and he is fairly, he's been fairly accurate over the years. Like I said, we look back at a three-year trend.
Oh, I appreciate that. And I would just suggest then, so that we have a better idea of that is, if that, that information, his expertise, could be included in what you have to present when you come here to ask for this money so that we have that, that gauge so we know what we're gauging it against and that information isn't provided. So I think Councilmember Questa asked a good question. so we know what we're gauging it against, and that information isn't provided. So I think Councilmember Questa asked a good question.
Yes, fair enough. You know, next time, I will have Jason Clark present, because he can speak to it better than I can.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve?
I move to approve nine C, two.
Thank you. A second?
Second.
All right, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you.
So then I think the next one is nine C, three, is that correct? The Allen Water Treatment Plant alum sulfate?
No, we passed that one, it's nine-
I'm sorry, 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 nine C, four, equipment, sorry, I was looking at the other one he did. Equipment purchase pothole patching machine, which has Director Maria DeAndrea here to present, or ask and answer any questions. So, not sure who it was that pulled this one. Mayor Protem, you want to start off?
I, I pulled this one mainly because when, I kind of decided that perhaps we shouldn't put vehicles on consent agenda because of the price, and this was actually approved in the budget, correct?
Correct.
And, so I guess one of the questions that I have is, have we, have we been doing in-house pothole patching?
Yes.
And without this machine, we just get it delivered, and then we use it until it gets cold, and then we can't use what's left.
Correct. The, the benefit of the machine is having that, keeping the asphalt warm, and therefore having less waste.
Okay, and then, also, I think I have the wrong one here. So we have less waste, but it seems like it was being marketed. Did they market us, or did we go out searching for this pothole patching machine?
No, I, I believe, again, as I mentioned in the study session, this was something that was identified as a need last fall, I believe, and so staff had done the research, demoed the machine through the city of North Glen, who also has one.
Okay, and so I guess my, so my question was, why are we choosing to change the way we've done things in the past? Just, is it going to, how much money, how long is it going to take us to pay for this machine?
We have not done that calculation. I think there's a variety of efficiencies, though, similar to the next purchase, about the, the actual vehicle where this machine will sit on. We'll have the ability to have four people in one truck, and everything is on the truck, so that it's your one mobile operation. So, to put a true dollar amount to that, beyond just the efficiencies of reusing, or continuing to use the asphalt, it's not really, you know, very strict dollar for dollar, but we definitely think that we can make, become not only more efficient, but more cost-effective as well.
Okay, and I noticed that comes out of the Road and Bridge Fund, the Public Improvement Fund. Is that normally where the money would come from for equipment purchases?
Excuse me, yes, for a new purchase like this, that is focused solely on, on road maintenance, we feel that that's an appropriate funding source for this new equipment.
Okay, thank you.
Mayor Protem, Councilmember Questa, sorry, my screen is not pulling up with everything as it should at the right time.
And, good evening, Mr. DeAndrea. I'm going to be toggling between a couple of the summaries we had here. And going back to, for instance, the hypochlorate that we were just discussing, where that bid was acquired through MAPO, Colorado Multiple Assembly Procurement Officials, and we're allowed to do that under the Inglewood Mississippi Code 4-1-3-1C, which provides the commodities, supplies, and equipment needed for the city may be obtained under any general bid or purchase contract of the United States Government, State of Colorado, or other governmental jurisdiction. If the prices, terms, and conditions contained therein, in the opinion of the, in the opinion of the city manager, is deemed to be the source of the lowest bid. So it appears that code allows us to just go through one particular source that's going to bid out through many different potential vendors. On this particular bid, it appears it went through Sourcewell. Now, on that code, it seems to pertain strictly through government agencies, MAPO being one of them, that we can pertain, or that we can obtain a bid of that source. Does Sourcewell meet that same standard? Does that comply with that Inglewood Code?
Yes, so Sourcewell is a, it's actually a Minnesota-based, it's not a company, it's an organization directed solely for government entities, educational entities, and nonprofits. And the board is made up of folks from those types of organizations, and their organization is solely for the purpose of cooperative purchasing. So they put together the contracts, they put together the request for proposal, and actually go through the process. And it's, then they put those contracts out for agencies across the United States to utilize. So we had to become a member of Sourcewell. They were formerly the National Joint Powers Alliance, NJPA. And so we, we do have the opportunity, under the current purchasing policy, to use multiple cooperative purchasing sites.
Thank you. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
To Councilmember Questa's point, I thought the, what he just read was that if another government entity had gone ahead and done the pricing, that we could do that, not just a cooperative that services government, that's not the same, so I don't know why that qualifies. Maybe the city attorney can answer that.
The city, I asked that question myself, and the city has historically allowed entities that are made up of governmental entities to fulfill the terms of that language, and because that's been the practice of the city, that's how we're moving forward.
In that case, I'm going to have to vote against this, because the normal practice of the city, if it's not following the law, is not something I want to do, and I appreciate the frankness of the answer, but that's not then following our law. That's not following what he just read. So, if we're practicing something and it's not following it, we should stop doing it.
City Attorney, is that what you were intending to suggest, is that we're not following the law, we're just doing a historical practice? Remember, this is the code that was written by the city council itself several years ago. And as they've interpreted it and implied it over the years, it's, it was written by a city council, it's not incredibly restrictive. It doesn't say that, it doesn't imply that, that this is an inappropriate use of the way they've termed it. So, because this was written by a city council and interpreted by the city councils over the years, I think it's their interpretation, and I'm fine with it. Right. Councilmember Questa?
You bet. So going back to the language, and this relates to Sourcewell, and City Attorney Brennan, Director DeAndrea, if you could speak to this. So does Sourcewell qualify as an entity of the United States Government, State of Colorado, or other governmental jurisdiction, or are they a private, co-op, private company?
No, they are an organization, non-for-profit, made up of individuals. I'd have to get the exact language for you, but it is, it is solely for the intent of providing this type of service to other local governments, educational institutions, and nonprofits.
So they only service government agency, or it also does extend to private industry, which would be a nonprofit?
Whatever the definition of a nonprofit is.
I'm on the fence on this one a bit here, just in terms of Sourcewell, and do they meet, I mean, it seemed to me pretty explicit. We, we've got to get this contract through a government entity, be it state, Colorado, MAPO qualifying the state of Colorado. This is the first time I've seen Sourcewell come across us, too. Have we used them in the past?
I have not used them here at the city of Inglewood, but I've used them in previous positions, yes.
Thank you.
Councilmember Berentine, and then let's, let's try and make a decision here.
I appreciate that other councils have every right to go ahead and interpret a code, a policy, the way that they see fit. And I'm interpreting it, I think, a little bit more strictly, the way that he read that. The way that it's done under the financial implication is that Sourcewell is a self-supporting service cooperative created to provide programs and services to member in the, in the government education and nonprofit sectors. That does not make them government. And the reason that that's allowed, in my opinion, in my interpretation of this, is because then, at state or local, the different entities that Councilmember Questa read, are elected officials that have already had some kind of overseer stewardship in what they were doing, and that's not what this is providing. So I would respectfully disagree that we shouldn't keep interpreting it that way, and I'll not be voting for it for that.
Mayor Protem?
And just to add to that, that was troubling me a little bit, also, when I read this. So, I don't think that, can we put it out for bid?
Certainly.
Okay.
We likely won't get that same price, but we can certainly put it out for bid and see what we get. Member Questa?
I appreciate it. I know I'm trying to get through this one, mayor. Bidding has been really under scrutiny a lot with citizens here, and I, I think that we all committed in 2019 that we're going to really stick to it and adhere to what the guidelines are. Is there a reason that we use Sourcewell as opposed to MAPO?
The Bergkamp unit that we wanted after we tested it, we tested two units, or invested, researched two units. This was the preferred one, and this was the cooperative purchasing source that we could get there, the bid off of.
Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. I will be voting yes on this, but if, if we don't have a, over three, we will, this will be voted down. I believe our staff have done an incredible amount of work on this, and are trying to get the most reasonable price we can. I think if we want to go back and start to reinterpret history on what we think or don't think, and then have personal opinions about it, let's have a conversation about that instead, so that the staff don't have to get quagmired into our conversation on this. But I will be voting yes for this. Mayor Protem?
What did you mean by the staff getting quagmired in our conversation? Is, is it not our job to ask questions and to assess for the public? What is in the best interest?
That is frustrating. Absolutely, and I totally agree with that. I'm just saying that they've done a lot of work. I believe that they've done the kind of work that I need to make a good discussion. I made a good decision tonight, and you don't believe that, that's fine. We can disagree, but I'm going to ask Mayor Protem that we then put it on a study session, so that we can make sure that we've got it really clear, so that they don't do this work if we aren't in the future going to approve it. So, they've been working on, on what we've thought in the past. So, I'm going to ask that we move to make a decision on this. So I'd like to call for the question, if someone would do that.
Yeah, I move to approve agenda item nine?
I'm actually asking to call for the question, which ends our discussion.
Point of information, mayor, I believe we are still in question. So if we call it now, it should, it should open discussion.
We have not done an approval yet. Yep, so, Councilmember, I think Mayor Protem, you had your, your light up, so if you wanted to say more?
Actually, it wasn't about calling the question. I, I do think maybe some of these things we ought to bring more to study session, I think would help us tremendously.
I will be bringing that up in mayor's choice. Anyone else want to continue talking about this? Do you want to make a motion?
I have discussion points, but I thought we were going to get to that portion of, we're just calling the question now.
Right, we're, no, all we're doing is, I'm not calling question because we didn't have a motion yet. So did somebody please make a motion to approve this, and then we can decide what we do, we're done asking questions. Would someone like to make a motion?
Move to approve agenda item nine C, four.
Yep. And a second?
A second.
All right, discussion. Go ahead of us, Councilmember Questa.
Thank you, mayor. I do appreciate the work that staff has done on this, and I have no doubt that the intention is to get the best price. And they, this may even be the result of that. I do still think that we've got pretty clear parameters there, and I'm not entirely sure that Sourcewell is falling within those guidelines of the code. And I'd rather, and this is for the, the pothole filler, which it sounds like is not an imminent need for us. It's something that we, we can take our time on, and I'd prefer we just go through the proper motions. Again, I, I do think that we all committed here, as a council, that we're going to follow this bidding process and make sure that the citizens have confidence in it. I think that everybody here is, saw the best price, looked for a piece of equipment we need, but at this time, I, I wouldn't support it, just because I'm not entirely confident that we followed that, that code as it's outlined. Thank you, mayor.
Councilmember Berentine?
I would echo what Councilmember Questa said, and I absolutely applaud his diligence in, in looking at this. I, I do think that staff, this has nothing to do with staff. Our job, as the Mayor Protem has brought up, is, is that we're supposed to do the best job we can in stewardship here and representation. And it isn't a reflection on staff, if there's an issue that we come up with, with this, this is a discussion. That's where we go back and forth and make the decisions of policy, and where we move forward with this. So, I, I really am dismayed that it's ever echoed as if it's some reflection on staff. It is not. It has to be a policy decision on how this council moves forward, and Councilmember Quest is correct. A lot of issues have come up about our bidding process and how, how we work. We don't want to all of a sudden find ourselves in some co-op, and then think that we were following our law, and then find out later that we were not. So, I've already voiced the other, which is that the, the law, as it was, or the code as it was done, was to make sure that some elected official eyes were on it. That's not what's happening here. And so, like I said, I, I can't support it. I think that we'll probably get a good price. Maybe the state has done some additional things that we haven't looked at, but I would have to agree that we need to take a look at this a little better, and I can't support it tonight.
Thank you. Mayor Protem Russell?
I agree with Councilmember Questa and Councilmember Berentine. I absolutely do appreciate the work that staff does on this, but I hear the frustration of the citizens that come, and I just want to make sure that we are being totally and completely transparent. So, I will not be supporting this. Thank you.
My final comments on this is, we are being very transparent right now, and I appreciate the conversation. And what my comment about the staff are, is I would like to have a conversation in a study session, so that they don't prepare stuff like this, when we indeed already know that we have a bit of a gray area here that we all probably have different views on. So I'm, I'm looking forward to making that more clear for them. They do great work, and I'm not saying anything about them. It's more about making sure that they don't, we don't ask them, redo work that we should have asked them to do begin with. So, with that in mind, please vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show, two ayes and four nays, the four nays being Mayor Protem Russell, Mayor Olson, Councilmember Berentine, and Questa.
I obviously voted wrong on that, but that's okay. It's still, that's the way you wanted it. All right, on to number five, I believe, C, five, nine C, five, is that right?
Yep.
The chassis.
The chassis, which, council, shall we just vote? Because this needs to be a no, we can't buy the chassis without the one above it. So, please vote on nine C, five, purchasing the patching machine chassis.
Need a motion in a second.
Oh, sorry.
Move to approve agenda item nine C, five.
Second, who would second?
Second.
And then vote.
All votes have been cast. Let the record show. One eye and five nays, the five, five nays being Members Sierra, Mayor Protem Russell, Mayor Olson, Councilmember Berentine, and Councilmember Questa.
Counsel, I would like to take like about a three-minute break to get my iPad rebooted. It is doing all kinds of weird things, and it's driving me nuts. I can't find anything that anybody's talking about. So if we just take a stretch break, don't leave this area. I'm going to turn it off and back on again. Appreciate it.
We can't go to the bathroom?
No, no, let's just stay here and get up and down. You want, do you want to go to the bathroom? All right, five-minute break, we'll be back at nine. I think so, yeah. Are you? I can't find anything working on here. I need to use my laptop. It happened to just now, too. Yeah, okay, I'm just going to do it on my laptop. Nathaniel, did you download the new one, too?
Yeah.
Yeah, and it was working, but then, your screen just doesn't show.
That's where mine was, so then when I thought we were on the right one, we were on the wrong one, and I'm like, I can't see anything that anybody can see.
Yeah, exactly, and so I started writing my notes outside of that app, just because I wasn't, I was worried that it was going to have issues tonight on that. Oh, no, no, it's fine.
No, no, I have it on my laptop. It's just doing weird things, and so I don't know where I am most of the time.
Yeah, no, that's really hard, and I apologize for that, so I'll call them tomorrow.
But again, I am so sorry, and then we'll, we'll figure out if, if maybe-
But again, I am so sorry, and then we'll figure out if maybe something needs to be upgraded.
So here's the weird thing. So there's certain items that do open up. So sometimes like the proclamation popped up with no issues. I have no notes in the proclamation, but...
And you had notes in it?
Well, no.
Not on the one that popped up?
I stopped putting notes in it last time around just because we were having issues. And so I was like, this time I'm just going to write everything outside of the app.
Okay.
So if I go into it...
Well, mine showed that it was actually updated.
Yeah, mine showed it was updated as well.
And I thought, oh, shoot, but my notes were there when I turned it on tonight, and I was flat. Okay.
So... So it'll pop up.
Try it.
Like if I look at the, see, that'll pop up. And then let's, yeah, yeah, exactly. So I'm wondering if like the size of the file matters. See, it just...
Is it a big file?
No.
Because sometimes when they're big, you know...
Because eventually, well, see, if you look, it's kind of like, it's almost like it's stinking, but I don't see any spinning. Well, actually, there's a screen below here.
Well, you know what? Let me just, I'm going to call them because I can't, I'm so sorry.
No, it's okay. It's okay.
All right, but is there anything you need tonight?
No, good.
Should I?
Thank you, though.
No, it's fine. So...
So troubleshoot that.
Yeah, we checked all the...
This is just like a meeting. He's in trouble, and then he's helping out.
When we downloaded last time, I didn't have any troubles the rest of the night, but tonight I did. And so I just was like, oh, no. And I actually printed off my hard copy of the agenda so that I could be working on that all the time.
Okay.
But when I'm trying to figure out where people are, these things, I can't figure out where it is.
Yes, I'm really sorry about that.
No, it's not your fault.
That makes it hard.
Always blame my GPS.
Yeah, it's usually the user, isn't it?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Done with it. I was going to say, you brought up some pretty good points on something.
I can't remember this.
But you brought up something, and I was like, oh.
Well, sometimes, actually, the discussion, I mean, that last discussion, how many I knew of.
Yeah, right, yeah.
So it was a good discussion, and I agree that we need a little bit.
Right.
I voted for it.
I complained.
So we'll see. I mean, just...
No, I can't get it to scroll at all.
Yeah.
Probably just working on this.
Okay.
Personally, yeah.
No, yeah, I am. There's just too much going on.
You what?
Yeah, it's just...
Use it.
So did you get your computer rebooted?
No, I stopped. Every week I was asking, I stopped depending on that app just because it's been very...
Don't use it.
Agenda notes, I mean.
It was just interesting. I can't get the PDF of this either.
Well, they disappeared, and they came back.
A lot of pages, so I didn't.
It was just...
It's not working so well.
How you doing?
Pretty good.
Yeah. Yeah, it's been a good discussion tonight.
We should...
I'm not, I'm not, I'm not jinxing it.
Yeah, I don't find it, I'm sorry.
All right, let's continue on. I'm hoping that this will work. Just want to make sure that we got all of the Nine Cs that were pulled, correct?
Yes, Nine C4 and Nine.
Five was the last one, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Agenda Item 10, it's public hearing. We have none. Agenda Item 11 is ordinance resolutions and motions. Eleven A is the SB3 SPWRP, Bychell, I can never remember, farm property lease of 2018. The South Platte Water Renewal Partners facility owned by Littleton and Englewood recommends that council approve by ordinance a two-year farm lease agreement with Kent Bychell for 471 acres of dry land, farm property located south of Bennett, Colorado. The recommendation to approve this two-year lease was approved by the supervisory committee on Thursday, November 15th, Staff Director of 2018. Staff Director of South Platte SPWRP, Peter Van Ry, is here to answer questions and help us. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. This is, just quickly, this is a farm lease. So South Platte Water Renewal Partners owns a significant number of acres east of the city where biosalads are spread. It's been that way for decades. That's where we take the salads out of the process, and we spread them on farmland, and then they grow various crops and other things on that land. And so this is one of the properties that we have out there. It's actually a property that's somewhat disconnected from our other properties, and so we don't actually put biosalads on this property because of where it's located. And so, but we do still own it, and we still have tenant farmers that lease and farm it. So in this instance, what occurred was, is in 2016, we had leased this out to a particular lessee. By late 2016, the lessee decided not to lease, not to farm it anymore, at which point they terminated the lease. And what we've done is we've gone out to our existing, our other lesser, or lessee out there that is adjacent to this property to talk to him about leasing this parcel as well, so that we can get it back into farming and generate some revenue off of it. And so basically, what this is, is this is a lease for the remaining two years of the original five-year term to keep us on the same renewal cycle, cycle of a five-year lease renewal for these properties. And I open it up to questions.
Thank you. Any questions from Council? Seeing none? Oh, Member Questa.
Thank you. I think I'm just going to complain about the price of real estate out there, and is it Bennett?
Yeah, it's near there.
Thank you. So the entire lease, and I'm sorry, I had computer issues in the meantime, too. Over the course of a year, we're getting $5,000 and some change for 471 acres?
Yeah, and so this is, you can see in the memo, this is based on dry cropland rental rates for Arapato County that's set by the state land board. And so it's not as if this is irrigated land. So irrigated land definitely leases out for a higher dollar amount. This is dry land. And so it does not have a, it's not a particularly lucrative business as it relates to leasing property. However, it does generate, it does generate $5,652 for a year, so it's doing something at least.
Do you know, was Mr. Burnett's lease in that same ballpark in terms of what he was paying annually?
You know, I don't have that information with me right now. I would assume it, I would assume it is because it's based on the same, based on the same state land board information. But I can, I can get that information and send it to Council if you'd like.
I'd be curious, if you would, please. Thank you. Thank you, Mayor.
Mayor Protem Russell?
Is he farming the land and growing crops on the land?
Yeah, I believe his intention is to, he's prepping the land right now, and I believe his intention is winter wheat. And so it's a dryland crop that they typically will farm out there.
So, I mean, I have had grandparents and aunts and uncles that rented out property, and they, they did it for a percentage of the crops. Does, does that ever happen, or...
You know, I'm not sure if that's how we have typically done it here. I actually, I actually don't know if that's how we've ever done it here. I'm going off of the way the lease was, the original five-year lease from 2016 was written. And so I think, again, I don't think it's terribly competitive for dryland farms, so it's not something that we can really, I don't think there's a lot of, there's a lot of options for it. But it's another thing that, I guess as we renew, as we look at leases again in a couple of years, we can look at that as a potential way to generate the revenue. I just, I don't have that information right now.
And I'll ask some questions from family members.
Oh, yeah, that'd be great. Yeah.
I actually have a friend that owns farms in Wiggins that rents them out also.
Okay.
So, okay.
Yeah, if it's dryland farm, I think is the, is the main thing we'd be looking at. And if you can find a way to generate us more revenue out of this, we would definitely be open to it.
Okay, thank you.
Member Sierra?
Will we ever use the land for biosalads?
You know, right now, it does not appear that we will, because it's, like I said, it's disconnected from where our main biosalads area, application area is, where our significant amount of acreage is. And so right now, it doesn't make sense to. However, I can't say that in 30 years, we won't need, you know, this land then. And so it becomes a, I understand that, I believe it was a couple of years ago, council discussed about what to do with this potential property. And right now, it does not appear that it's, that it makes a whole lot of sense to dispose of it or sell it to property owners in the area. And so we're just continuing to keep it as an asset of the South Platte Water Renewal Partners and generate some revenue off of it.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem Russell again.
So do we generate enough income to pay at least the taxes on the land?
I can check that. I'm sure it's a pilt at that point, payment in lieu of taxes. But I, we can verify what the pilt is for this, this 471 acres and get that back.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further questions, can I have a motion to approve in a second?
I move to approve Council Bill Three, South Platte Water Renewal Partners Bickley Farm Property Lease for 2018.
In a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? Seeing none, please vote.
All votes being cast. Let the record show. Six ayes.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next is 11A2 CB1 Alta Englewood Station Planned Unit Development. Staff recommends council approved and refer the proposed PUD district plan back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for modifications based on the requirements of this title. Here to answer questions is Wade Burkhalter, our planning manager.
Good evening, Mayor Olson, members of council. As mentioned, this is the first reading of the Alta Englewood Station PUD district plan, and tonight, council has the option to either approve the ordinance as written, deny, or refer the proposed PUD district plan back to the Planning and Zoning Commission. You heard earlier from Representatives of Ogilvy Properties and Wood Partners that they would request this be deferred, referred back to the Planning and Zoning Commission for further review and changes, potential changes. Since the public hearing was closed on December 17th, there's no real avenue to make changes to the plan without going back to P and Z. And we've heard that with regard to height, parking ratio, and potential site plan issues, the applicant and staff concurs that taking that conversation back to Planning and Zoning Commission would be the best option for those involved on the applicant's side as well as staff. That, to be clear, would be in a public hearing format, notifying the residents and whatnot, again, of the public hearing before the P and Z. Outside of that, I am here to answer any questions you might have regarding the request.
Thank you. Council, do you have any questions before we make a motion? Seeing none, would someone like to move CB1?
I'll move.
Go ahead.
I'll move. Now we put it back to Planning and Zoning for review.
And I'll second Member Berentine's motion.
Discussion? Mayor Protem Russell?
So was the motion to send it back to Planning and Zoning?
The motion actually is Alta Englewood Station Planned Unit, it doesn't, it's not, we get, we have a choice of what we're going to do on this, I believe.
Yes.
Okay, so was the motion to approve the plan?
Yes, it was. It was to put it back to Planning and Zoning.
Okay. So if we're, and we're discussing about sending it back to Planning and Zoning. If we're going to send it back to Planning and Zoning, I would like Planning and Zoning to address this issue of a two-step process. I don't want a two-step process anymore. I think we should just have them come forward with the site plan instead of the two-step...
I apologize, but point of information, I'm not sure that those are issues that we can attach to this PUD. Could the attorney please address that?
Yeah, that's a separate issue, and I think what you're asking is for a change in the code, because right now, the code allows it, and you're suggesting you'd like the P and Z to look at that. But as, I'm glad, actually, you brought that up, Mayor Protem, because it's very helpful when you refer something back to P and Z, that you give them a general outline of what you'd like them to review and prepare a recommendation upon.
Okay, thank you.
So I just want to clarify with that. So you're affirming what she has asked to happen?
No, it, she's asked for P and Z to look at something, which is just a general request. But as to the matter in front of you, the matter that Councilmember Berentine just made a motion on, the motion stands the way it's written. I do suggest, though, that when you send something back to P and Z, for the exact language is, refer a proposed PUD back to the Commission for modifications, that you suggest to them some of the modifications you'd like them to look at.
All right, thank you. Mayor, Mayor Protem, do you want to respond to that?
Well, yes.
If it's still the same vein, then I'll go to Councilmember Berentine.
Right. Then do we, if we have to send it back to them with instructions, does that need to be included in the motion?
It doesn't have to be included in the motion, but if it's included in part of the discussion, so P and Z knows what it is they're supposed to be looking at, that would work as well. It just needs to be clear to P and Z exactly what you're wanting them to look at.
Okay, thank you. And so that's...
Very helpful. Councilmember Berentine?
I made the motion, and I did not make, I'm not making a recommendation for any modifications or recommendations from this council we move forward, because they've already heard what the issues were that were brought up. You had people that came here that asked for very specific things that I don't believe were even in the original public hearing, and so I think that would be inappropriate to include what they wanted us to recommend to them. I think that the whole thing ought to be heard again by Planning and Zoning with a fresh eye, considering what happened at the public hearing. So I'm not asking, my motion, I'm not putting a motion forward that had any modifications, just that it go back to Planning and Zoning. And there is no requirement that we do that. The city attorney has suggested it would, you know, might be nice, but I think there would be a lot of discussion on any kind of issues going forward for that kind of recommendation that may bring us into the wee hours of the night and maybe not be productive. So my motion did not include any of that.
Council, would you like to further discuss what, how Councilmember Berentine clarified that, and if you want to make any changes or amendments to what she was recommending? Okay, you'll be accepting it as a statement of referral back to Councilmember Questa?
And mine's more of a procedural question. I believe in ADUs once we sent one back, but I can't quite recall exactly how it goes. And Councilmember Berentine is probably correct here, that if we each go down the line, we'd probably have differing concerns and maybe some overlap here and there. So when we typically vote to send these back, is it just with that plain language we send it back? Or is the typical process to each member, again, we might have our own thoughts on it, should be tacking on their own individual concerns? We might even have conflicting concerns up here, depending upon which member we speak with. So how is that process usually undertaken? When do we do this?
I appreciate the question. I'm going to refer to the city attorney on this because I have not seen it go quite like this with this kind of a PUD.
Okay, because this council wants us to be sure and stick to the letter of the law, I need to make it very clear what the letter of the law here is. It states, approve, deny, or refer a proposed... It states, approve, deny, or refer a proposed PUD back to the Commission for Modifications. There is no choice three. If you refer it back for modifications, it's very helpful to P and Z to know what it is you're asking specifically to look at and modify. It doesn't require you to, but it's very helpful to P and Z to do that. They're not taking it back to the drawing board. When you refer it back, they'll, they will understand that it's referred back pursuant to subsection 5, G5 of the code.
Thank you. Councilmember Berantine.
Well, then, I guess what we would need to do then is deny it, so I suppose I would withdraw my motion and then put a motion out to deny the PUD. If I did that, would that stop them from going back to Planning and Zoning with a site plan?
Yes.
Why?
A denial on first reading is a denial, and we would not even take it to second reading.
Well, of course not, because there wouldn't be a first reading. What I'm asking is if I, if, if we just denied it, the, the development plan, the PUD development plan, what prevents them from going back to P and Z with a whole nother thing, which is what they're doing anyway, in creating a site plan?
The code has language in it that at, upon a denial, the applicant has to wait one year to resubmit an application for the same proposal. So, there would be a one-year delay before they could resubmit an application with essentially the same development plan per code.
Could I ask that we think about how we can make this work to what we all think we want? I think my sense of, we do want it to go back to Planning and Zoning to allow for it to have some changes. So, how can we come to an agreement on how the statement's read so that that's where it ends up? Member Questa?
No, it's not done. Then I'll let my motion stand as it is.
Member Questa?
I don't want to jam this group up for a year, and I want to give them a fair shake. It, it sounds like this is, at least per their request, and, at least for me, I would like to send it back to Planning and Zoning. I'm just not sure how we each express, you know, the things that we as individual council members would like to see changed on behalf of our constituents to Planning and Zoning. Would it be, we just state them out loud and then hope Planning and Zoning listens to this, this later? And I know that, at least in the past, I've heard that I thought Planning and Zoning did appreciate, what are you guys looking for? If you guys are kicking it back, can you give us some guidance on, on what objections you had? Doesn't mean they'll adhere to them, but just so at least they know the reason that's landing back on their desk. And I'm happy to jump in with what I would like to see changed on it too, if we're just going to go that avenue.
Okay, Councilmember Wink? I'll come back to that if that's what we decide. Councilmember Wink?
Thanks, Mayor. I too want to not inhibit progress for our city, and so, I would, I would like Planning and Zoning to relook at this. And I think perhaps we could share as a council a bulleted list. Maybe we can invite Planning and Zoning to have a portion of a study session soon. I mean, could, could we meet with them? Or no?
Really, no, that's not our role.
Well, we send them a list.
Councilmember Sierra.
I was going to say, I too want to push it back to Planning and Zoning. I guess my concerns with the entire PUD, PUD process, we can talk about that now, was just, to me, it felt like too much take and not, not a give-and-take process. It just felt that it was going to be rushed through without much say on the, from City Council and from the citizens. I had concerns with the parking situation and some of the other things that were brought up, including some of the future capital improvement projects that aren't in place today. I just felt like a lot of it was just moving forward without, you know, the city of Inglewood making determination on when some of these things were going to happen. So, those were some of my main concerns regarding the PUD.
Thank you. I, I thought Mayor Protem's comments about giving some recommendations is really important for this to do it to the best, with the best information we've all given. Councilmember Sierra, you just started down that road, so you did that in about 30 seconds. I wonder if each of us can give some sort of category areas for them to look at, and maybe I'll take it back to you, Councilmember Questa, because you seem to have some, if you could articulate those.
Sure, I'm happy to jump in, and it's probably going to build on a lot of what Councilmember Sierra said. I did have concerns regarding the parking. It seemed one of the justifications for the reduced parking was that there's an expected millennial population, and that according to the studies that they've reviewed, that they're in some cases less likely to open, own cars, therefore, they'd be dependent on the nearby mass transit centers, and that there was a future pathway or some means for folks to get from that building to the mass transit center that would be produced down the road. And I thought that without having that in place, it's tough for us to compromise on the parking now. I drive past Earth Treks pretty often, and they are doing wonderful business over there. That parking lot is packed, and I can quickly see people spilling over if they can't get a spot into Earth Treks. And it does sound like this group did outreach to Earth, excuse me, Earth Treks, and that they're getting along now, and I appreciate the outreach, but I could see that neighborly relationship getting sour quick if you're starting to see parking spilling over. And, and I don't want people running across Hampton either, you know, trying to catch a train and, and not having a quick way to get there. So, that for me was one of the primary concerns I had, and, and I'll leave it there in my 30 seconds. Thank you, Mayor.
Wonderful. Councilmember Berantine.
Discussing how many parking spaces, how many units, even if it was kind of close to what they had originally said would be the largest apartment development in this community to date, and we've already had a lot of pushback about not doing more apartments. This council made a, made it very clear during the comp plan that they wanted to protect the industrial areas, and that is, was the site for over 600 people being employed, and we are quickly losing our industrial areas and switching them over to residential, and we made a concerted effort to try and make sure that we didn't do that, and here we are right away doing that. So, I think that we ought to consider not switching this over to residential and preserving our industrial area. I went down to that area and saw the same thing that you did, Councilmember Questa. We have a very successful business that's gone into that site, and from the daybreak until late into the night, that parking lot is packed. And I heard from a lot of businesses around there that they're, they like having another business, but they're concerned about where in the heck we were going to shove an apartment building into their, the size of, actually larger than Cherry Hills Alta, and how that would impact that area, and, and the fact that we're taking away from our industrial. So, my guidance to Planning and Zoning would be to honor the comp plan and maintain our industrial areas and relook at that site altogether. I am not interested in compromising on parking spaces and units for an area that wasn't supposed to be residential in the first place. I'm a little concerned about the way this whole thing has happened. I also would echo the Mayor Protem in urging the Planning and Zoning Department to not do a two-tier plan where we have something where a development site is done, where we limit, as Councilmember Sierra said, the involvement of this council, of the community, and put the burden on our staff. So, those are my suggestions. As we have right now, there is no, there, there is no site plan, there is no plan, so there are no units, there are no, there isn't anything in the concern about whether it was 50 feet that was being discussed, but they had in the, had in the paperwork that we were approving 100, and is, we would have, I would want to go back and look at that to even see what they were saying, because we're getting ourselves confused and the cart before the horse on this a little. So, those would be my suggestions to Planning and Zoning, along with what happened at the public hearing, that's all.
Thank you. I'm going to move on to Councilmember Wink, if you have.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll be succinct. My recommendation to, to Planning and Zoning would echo some of what we've heard before, and without repeating everything for 10 minutes, I'll say that it's regarding the parking and ensuring that, that the allotted parking is, well, like, at least commensurate with the amount of living inhabitable spaces, but, but to a level that accommodates the fact that there is street parking that will be, be used, and that, that it's done in such a way that we can feel comfortable about whatever potential spill over. There were lots of questions about that during the public hearing, so that's my primary concern.
Thank you. Mayor Protem, would you like to weigh in?
With, with that, I, I have some huge concerns about the light industrial area. I do believe that that is one of the areas of the city that we do need to protect. It is our greatest potential income maker, and I think we need to be careful about piecemealing that together. With that said, I'm, I'm also concerned about the infrastructure, our infrastructure being able to handle it, and I personally would like to see traffic studies done if with, already completed, and how it's going to feed into Hampton, or Oxford, or even up to Broadway, because the people that live down by Oxford Station are really upset about how much increased traffic, and I believe this property is probably going to be bigger than the Oxford Station also. And I do believe it's going to impact our way of life. So, those are the things that I really want to be addressed, so, thank you.
Thank you for sharing. Did you want to add anything, Councilmembers? Okay, so, I think many of the things that were said are similar for me. I think we set a limit for parking, and I would need Planning and Zoning to have a little stronger reason for why we would not go with the, what we've set up for our units, a number of, not a 1.5 versus 1.3, or whatever people are claiming. The second thing is the walkability. I do not see this as, I mean, it's close to the light rail, and it has all kinds of possibilities, but without the infrastructure being clear, I still see people driving cars. And so, I'd like to say we live in 20 years from now where I think it is going to be a change, but I, we have to live in the here and now, and that impacts people, so I want to see that planned into this, and it's got to be clear. We could not have done the Kent Place thing without new traffic lights, new ways of patterns, widening areas, that has to be clearly addressed, and I don't think that that stuff happens out of the blue. We have to make sure there's an accountability process. And then the last thing, which I'm very impressed with the, both the gentlemen that came forward tonight, I, I'm hopeful that you really do want to have an open process with more citizens involved and people who are naysayers, so that it's a really great project. So, I am very leery of restricting the city of breathing input along the way, and so I'd like to, Planning and Zoning, to tell us why we should do this two-stage thing, or how the public and, just feedback from people. Kent Place is a much better place because we spent many, many meetings at it, and I think at the end of the day, you know, maybe some people don't like it, but still, it's better than it would have been without citizen input, that, that walk there, drive there. I don't think it would be where it is, and that's true for several other places that we haven't done that with, and so I'd like to make sure we maintain that openness and for input along the way. So, given that, we have a motion to refer, which Councilmember Berantine made, and it was seconded. Are we ready to vote? Please vote. So, let's just be clear, a yes vote would be referring it back, and a no vote would mean no, and then we have to figure out what we're doing. Thank you. Please vote.
All votes being cast, let the record show six eyes.
Thank you. Good work there, council. Onto 11C1, which is a resolution and motion and award contract to PRI. Staff recommends the approval by motion of the contract between the city of Inglewood and PRI Management Group for Project Management Services on the Tri-Tech inform records management system, and the total amount of that agreement is $85,190. And our applications manager, Joe Eisenbart, and Police Commander Kelly Martin are here to present or to answer questions.
Good evening.
Thank you for being here.
I don't have much of a presentation here.
That's fine. Right, council, do you have questions for these two? Mayor Protem Russell?
One of the things that concerns me greatly is that we spent $530,000, $530,156.71 for a records management system, and training did not come in the package, and now we're coming back for training. That is a lot of money.
This is not training, this is project management.
So, we need a project manager that will spend two years with us, correct, and you, and teach us how to use this system?
No, the, the contract is for 12 months, and it's simply to assist us in making sure that we have resources where we need them, when we need them, in order to successfully implement the project.
I think perhaps they should present, Mayor Olson, because I read somewhere 12 to 24 months.
The, the original RFP was for 12 to 24 months. However, Tri-Tech has accelerated their, their implementation schedule, so they are now tightening that window to just inside of 12 months.
Mayor Protem, if you would like to have them present more, go ahead, ask them what you would like a little bit more on.
That's okay, I'd let other council members ask questions.
Member Sierra?
I may ask some of the questions that you may have, Mayor Protem. So, the way that I read this was that this potentially could be a, another amount that we see next year, if, it does go past 12 months. So, we're looking at $85,000 for the year 2019, and 2020, we may see another $85,000 for that same project management. Is that right?
No, that's not correct.
Okay.
This, this is simply for the implementation of the RMS project, which is slated to begin February 5th, and we would see a go-live date of, I believe it's November 5th.
Okay.
Of this year. There would, of course, be some closeout, that's within that 12-month period.
Okay. So, another concern that I had on this was, you know, just speaking to IT staff, I know that they're really backlog in terms of projects. So, was there any communication with IT, knowing that they didn't have the capacity to work on this project, and this $85,000 should have been part of the original, or should have brought, should have been brought to council along with this $530,000 RMS project?
There was communication with the IT department. Initially, we felt like we could handle it, but things are just really stacking up on us, and I think this is, in order to protect that investment for the RMS project, we should, we should spend this money so that we can make sure that everything that needs to be done gets done.
Further questions? Councilmember Wink?
And just probably to reiterate, within the 12-month or under 12-month, whatever that timeframe is, and that's covered by the $85,000, naturally, in these processes, there's implementation, and then there's a period of follow-through and sort of troubleshooting that's included in that package. Is there a timeframe for the contract that, just so the public can know, or, or just, do you mind reiterating that that will happen, that if post-November 5 anticipated implementation, that should you need further project management support, it, it should be?
Yes, the contract is for 12 months.
Mm-hmm.
It would begin on February 5th.
February 5th.
This year, and therefore, would be over by February 5th of 2020.
Very good. Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Councilmember Berantine?
This was pretty contentious when it came through the first time, so, I'm, I am a little concerned that it got missed in the original bidding. Is there a reason for that? Why, why it wasn't included in there? I mean, if this is such an in-it-all part, it's not like it's just, I mean, it's a good chunk, a good percentage of the original bid that we're adding onto this.
Yeah, I won't argue that. I mean, initially, we did believe that we could handle it within the IT department, but again, there are so many competing factors that we're dealing with, that, you know, as we, as we give it more thought, it's just not something that we, we would be well advised to do.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions? Could I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve agenda item 11C1.
I second.
All right, further discussion, council. Councilmember Berantine?
I know that you guys are working hard on this, and I know that it's hard to maybe assess what's going on, and that's part of the reason that we do the RFP, that we go out to a professional company, and they should be making sure that we have upfront, that we understand what the implementation of the system's going to be, what we're doing. And I believe that it was also that we've already been working with them in the system in the city. Is that correct? Is that correct? With Triarc, or, I'm sorry, I'm saying that wrong.
Tri-Tech.
Yeah, Tri-Tech.
Yeah, there was a CAD implementation earlier in 2018.
So it's not like we're not unused to what's going on here. And this is a significant portion of the original. We have to come to a place where we're doing a process and understanding what we're doing so that we don't come back and have these kind of problems. It makes my constituency concerned and it's uneasy for this kind of money. And then kind of we have to because we already did the other and so now to make it work. And then it makes it look a little disingenuous and lack the transparency that we need. And for that reason, I don't protest what we're doing here, but I am protesting this process and I'm not going to be able to vote for it. So I appreciate your understanding and it's not for lack of that, I appreciate your work.
Member Questa?
Thank you. I feel a bit boxed in on this myself. I certainly support the records management system. I think it's going to be a critical tool for our public, our law enforcement and public safety and keeping everything where they need to be. And really bringing not only the physical building that we've got there, but bringing the digital system that we have into the 21st century. So I feel like it's tough for me to say that I want the records management system, but then not also support the project manager that we need. Having said that, when the things come along piecemeal, it gets tough to explain. And I think getting these all in one lump is certainly easier for me to justify just a single vote as opposed to multiple votes. And I think it's fair that citizens might come forward and say, you know, you told me it was 5:30, throw that in and we get up to 6:15, what's next? And so, you know, a fair concern, I will support tonight, but the more that we can get these grouped together, I think it's going to be much easier for me to support them. And again, I appreciate all the work EPD does and that's why I've been supportive of this. I truly think that the community is incredibly supportive as well. But consolidating these to one vote would be great, too. Thank you, Mayor.
Any further comments? I will be supporting this tonight because I believe we have to support it with the kind of staffing that you need and the kind of training. I agree with, echo the conversations already and would like to encourage some sort of a, perhaps a deeper dive for IT and folks that have to make this decision on metrics for when to figure out when staffing's overloaded. And perhaps this could have gotten caught earlier so that we can do it all together. But appreciate the work that you have done. I just agree that the process is a little bit difficult to stomach. Mayor Protem, you've got your light on.
This is really troublesome for me. A lot of people came forward tonight and I know that this all has to do about the process. But it is frustrating when people call the police department and we've passed the budget and now we're spending the premium. But people call and they don't get responses and they don't get treated well. And I apologize that I'm having to say this because it breaks my heart. I can't support this. I'm sorry.
All right. Council, please vote.
All votes being cast. Let the record show four ayes and two nays, the two nays being Mayor Protem Russell and Councilmember Berentine.
Thank you for your presentation. Onto 11C2. This is the EMIRF construction contract for Plaza Circle. The Board of Inglewood McClellan Reservoir Foundation recommends City Council approve a resolution of support to enter into a contract with 53 Corporation LLC for the construction of Phase 2 of Plaza Circle in the amount of $938,140. And here, Utilities Director Tom Brennan is here to answer questions. Questions for Mr. Brennan, Council? Seeing none, could I hear a motion to approve?
I move to approve Agenda Item 11C2 EMIRF construction contract for Plaza Circle.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All right. Discussion. Councilmember Berentine?
Again, as a separate organization, all you're coming forward for is a resolution of a support, or we actually don't have a real vote in this. I mean, you're just coming for a vote of support. We actually, our vote will not, can't override what the Board of EMIRF already decides to do.
I would have to refer to legal?
Is she your legal counsel for EMIRF?
She is for the city and that's why this is a council question.
It's a resolution of support, but if we voted it down, we couldn't stop EMIRF from doing it.
City Attorney, would you like to weigh in on the council side of this?
Sure. EMIRF's attorney has informed me that EMIRF serves to forward the interests of the City Council and that EMIRF should not be acting outside the requests of City Council. So they don't act without these resolutions. If this resolution is not passed, what EMIRF's attorney has told me is it won't move forward in front of EMIRF either.
And that's because EMIRF has made a decision to follow the advice of their attorney, but they're not obligated legally. I mean, you have the authority to do it, but the Board has made a decision not to move forward unless this council supports your resolution. Is that correct?
Yes.
Is that a correct representation of it, City Attorney?
I'm repeating back with the attorney for EMIRF.
Oh, that's, yeah, I wasn't trying. That's my interpretation of it then is, I appreciate that, that the EMIRF organization and that Board has made a decision that they'll not move forward without a resolution of this council. Of course, they could always decide to do it differently at some other time with some other legal advice, but I appreciate that. Thanks for the clarification.
Mayor Protem Russell?
Once we spend the $938,000, and that's not all our money, right? Some of that?
Correct. That is not all our money. RTD is contributing $395,000 of that.
Okay. And then the roadway will be done when this is completed?
That is correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Member Questa?
And I'm asking a question to the discussion portion, but just to be clear, Mayor Protem said we're not spending our money. The $938,000 is coming from EMIRF funds, correct? Not City of Inglewood's funds. Thank you.
It's an 813 total of what's coming from EMIRF funds.
Understood. Thank you.
Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
All votes being cast. Let the record show six ayes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Agenda Item 12, general discussion, the mayor's choice to begin with. We have before us the decision and discussion for the executive search firm. So we agreed that we would come with some ideas of what we thought were the best of these and your comments about them. I'm going to open it up to you to give your pros, cons, if you want. If you want to share scores, you certainly can, but I'd like to ask us to limit it to a few minutes each and then let's come to some sort of conclusion. Councilmember Questa?
Just in terms of how we do this, Ken, do you want to start with one particular company? And we'll go down the line and give our opinion on that? Are we each giving our opinions on all three?
Would you prefer, because I don't have a one way or the other?
I'm not tied to either one.
Okay, well, let's start with each one because that way it doesn't preview someone against another. And let's just start with the first one that we heard, which was US Gov, right? Gov HR? So why don't we start with that one? Let's hear the pros from everyone on that one and maybe any cons. And let's move on to the NOVAC. And then the last one was CPR. Yeah. Would you like to kick us off, Member Questa?
If you'll allow me to pass for now, I'm kind of digging up my notes from that particular meeting.
Councilmember Ciara is ready.
Yeah, I'll start. So with Gov HR, so that was the first night, so that was Ms. Voorhees. So what I really liked about her presentation was, right away, she hit us with a calendar on what we can expect moving forward, what the project timeline is, and set very specific timeframes for when we can, or what we expect to see out of that entire process. Her presentation also featured cities that were very much like ours, about 30,000 in population, many with city manager positions that she's worked on. And I really felt that she was going to give us a lot of her attention. She mentioned that there was going to be weekly status updates on Fridays. So just a lot of detail to her presentation.
Thank you, Member Ciara. Would you like to come on down? Mayor Protem, would you like to go next? Comments about that one?
Actually, I forgot my notes. Picked up my piles, but I agree with the things that Councilmember Ciara has shared. I like the personal attention that I believe that she would give to our community. And there was one thing specific that, it had to do with background searches and things like that. I thought she would do a good job on that piece of it.
Councilmember Wink?
I loved Ms. Voorhees' articulate, thoughtful, and sensible, broad level of understanding and accommodation of the requirements of her role with a city like ours for a search like this. There seemed to be a great deal of passion behind the technical prowess that, looking at the three we met with, that stood out to me, a love for what they do and a commitment to doing it well. I took zillions of notes. I felt very comfortable with Ms. Voorhees. And I went back and forth in thinking, do we want one person to liaise with us or do we want to have a few members of the organization? But in the end, I think, after meeting with all three of them, I liked the fact that we knew, we met with Ms. Voorhees and we knew that we would be communicating with her. That cleans up communication mishaps quite a bit. I think that just the line is clear and consistent. So I liked that she emphasized that throughout her presentation. I didn't care that she's not from Colorado. I don't think that's a prohibitive factor. I could talk for eight years. I really wrote everything down, but I thought, come on, Mayor Olson. Yeah, I was very, very pleased with the presentation she gave that night.
Councilmember Berentine?
I'd like to, I agree with a lot of what's already been said. I think that a single person would provide some more consistency, continuity of conversation, communication. I also liked that she was going to talk to all of council. But the most important thing was that she made it very clear that, and was some kind of surprise that the question even came up, that there would be no concern at the end once somebody was chosen or made the finalist, that they would be confused about what we were offering for pay. She made it seem as if there would be, that it should be a fairly straightforward process for any negotiation, that we shouldn't be stuck by the time we come to that point in the process and then have somebody have some kind of expectation that we weren't willing to meet, that they would know that ahead of time. And I appreciate probably from her experience that that was, that's important, as we found out.
Thank you, Senator. Councilmember Berentine?
It is.
Councilmember Questa?
Thank you. And good points made so far by everybody. I think in terms of warranty, and I kind of felt like we were talking to managers about cars when we got to that, but I think they had the longest warranty, her particular firm. I did like the accessibility that she offered. It seemed that she said that, you know, you'd have her desk phone, but it rings through to her cell phone. And she struck me as somebody that answers her phone at probably all hours. I just got a very strong sense of confidence from her. I thought she had a really good background. It does seem like she's got a good backing group behind her, but they kind of are behind the scenes and she's always your point of contact and then can kind of figure out the details that you're asking for, even if they're not her immediate area of expertise and get back with you. So I walked away with that one with just a sense of confidence. She struck me as somebody who was good at what she does. Thank you.
Thank you. I want, I'll add just extra things. I agree with everything that's been said so far. I actually was, I don't think I had this firm rated as high when we first chose it. And I'm really thankful that some of you really saw something there because I was pleasantly surprised. I thought it was a really well-done presentation. There was an authenticity about her that I thought, I felt like we could all click with. And I really liked that her sweet spot was our kind of city and size. So that struck me, too. And I don't think that was made up. I think it was really backed up with who she's done, who she's been a part of. So, all right, on to NOVAC. Was NOVAC the second?
No.
Yeah. It was CPS HR. Yeah. Okay, let's move on. I just want to do them in order so there's not any. I just couldn't remember CPS initials. So let's go with CPS HR the next for pros on this one and any cons. Would anyone like to kick us off?
Oh, anybody, Ken?
Anybody. Yeah. Councilmember Ciara?
I'll go ahead. So I think one of the advantages that I saw potentially, just depending if we wanted to go that way, was that they are a bigger group. Kind of going with Member Wink, I was going back and forth of whether or not we wanted multiple people to speak with. And so just the fact that they do have, they do seem bigger, they have, they've done 600 executive recruitments. The fact that Gloria is local, I saw as a positive. They have an active candidate pipeline. I wish they would have highlighted more cities around our size or what, you know, what we're going with, but I saw those as the positive. There were a few other things, but I have so many notes on that company, so I'll let someone else speak at the moment.
Anyone else want to add to that? Councilmember Questa is going to hit his.
Pardon me. Sure. This one didn't quite grab me as much. I didn't feel that even to their presentation, it wasn't as customized to us as some of the others were. Now, given the third presenter, they didn't have the PowerPoint, but I still thought they had a lot of data that was immediately relevant to us, where it looked like they'd really done their homework. And certainly with the first group we just discussed as well. To me, I thought it was nice also that we'd have somebody here in Colorado, but the same day, I don't think that that's a deal breaker anymore, you know? We can reach anybody anywhere globally. And to me, it's not so much is somebody in the state, it's more will somebody pick up their phone and be accessible. It did seem like a big team, too. I kind of like a tip of the spear, which is more what I got with the first and third group as opposed to this one where it seemed more searched by committee as opposed to a singular person. So this one, I didn't walk away with as strong an impression as the other two. Thank you.
Member Wink?
Thanks, Mayor. I got the feeling that this organization would be qualified to do the work, just as the other two would be. And as Mr. Questa mentioned, I also had just less confidence leaving the interview with them. I appreciated the fact that Josh Jones, the young man that spoke for most of the time or seemed to have most of the technical details, seemed that he would be the one liaising with us and doing the work. I appreciate that he was a city official at some point and that had, he had knowledge of Fort Collins, they're working with Manitou Springs. So they're locally invested already, but as I mentioned before, I don't think with this process and the hiring of this position that that's absolutely necessary. I was a little bit, I had some reservation about their candidate pipeline. Although they said that they had capacity and they have a large number of individuals on their workforce, something between the lines gave me a feeling that we might get lost in the shuffle and that it was a little much to put one more, and a major search like this for us on their plate. So I want a level of attention for this and communication that I didn't feel I might get from CPS, which surprised me.
Councilmember Berentine?
Oh, I apologize. Anything, I mean, I think everything's been said and I don't want to belabor it. I agree with what's been said already.
I agree, too, with what's been said already. And I think they do have some good points, but they didn't reach out and grab me either. So.
All right. Thank you. And I will ditto the rest, same kinds of observations, don't have anything new to add. So on to the third, which is NOVAC, the NOVAC woman and company. Anyone want to jump in on this one? Councilmember Ciara, you want to start us again? Thank you.
I could jump in as well.
Yeah, thank you.
So, yeah, so I felt that she can definitely do the work. She struck me very much like the first candidate. Yeah, so I, I felt that she can definitely do the work. She struck me very much like the first candidate. I did have a problem with not having a PowerPoint, though. And so, so the, the issue there, at least for me, is, you know, obviously, we wanted to project something to the citizens. And so if they were listening online, it would be very hard to follow. And it was very hard for me to take down notes on the process and things, and things like that. I'm fine, you know, it's, it's, it's her option. I also don't like putting together PowerPoints, but I know there's a lot of people that are visual learners or they, they see it that way. So, I don't know, I, I, there was just something about it that I just, I didn't, didn't enjoy. But other than that, I thought she, she, she did really well. She answered a lot of the questions and, but yeah, when we're comparing the first and the third, I, I look at that and it's like that, that's one of the things and just trying to write down all the notes of what she would do in terms of the process, you know. It was there, but it's just, yeah, just small things at this point.
Councilmember Wink?
Thank you, Mayor. I really loved this presentation. Starting at the back and moving forward to her presentation, she asked really incredibly sensible questions and relevant questions. The questions are very impressive to me, very thoughtful. I again liked the fact that there would be one person communicating with us throughout the process. And Ms. Tuck Parish, right. So she would be the liaison between us and the clients. They have a robust client network. They seem to be a small organization, but they've established themselves in the field, certainly. Their placement history seems very strong and positive and very aligned. I think a lot of what was said from this organization aligns pretty closely with what Gov. HR, Ms. Voorhees, shared with us there. The PowerPoint, lack of PowerPoint didn't bother me at all. I understand Mr. Ciara's points and certainly agree with them, but it didn't bother me. I got a sense that she, she almost would play a role as, she was maybe more invested or would be, or would be able to take a position as being more invested than the others along with us in terms of finding the right city manager for Englewood for us. That she really works to understand the seven of us and our city and other important officials in the city and would really be working on behalf of us. I thought that it would almost be a personal thing for her to perform at that level. Yeah.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
I, I really liked her as well. And I remember her, you know, they've come before Englewood before. And her comments about that this is an interview, not an, not an election and trying to make sure that she really identified the goals of the city and the council. The only thing that I had a concern about is that there was so much emphasis placed, and rightfully so. She should be proud of the percentage of women and minorities that she places. She should be proud of that. But she puts so much emphasis on that, that it starts to make me concerned that that becomes a little bit more of an overriding factor for their own personal pride for their organization as a, as a 100% woman-owned organization, which I'm very proud of women who succeed. But there was so much emphasis put on, so many times in my notes, that it starts to overweigh that whether her, their organization's goals and percentages would sway some way in what we're doing. I think that she, it was, that was the first time when I was reminded that we had requested a 24-month guarantee and they were only given the 18, but she was the one who said, I know you've done the 24. And that reminded me that we had asked that in the RFP. Otherwise, as the diversity, and that was a strong pull for her, and I certainly, we're in a very diverse community and I, and I appreciate that and like that. I want to make sure that we're doing the best we can to get the best people in whatever body they happen to inhabit. She had some really good experiences as well. And I believe that she had some experience in size of city that we were. So as Councilmember Wink brought up, my concern is a little that, the other comment that got made is that this is her third time up with us and the last time she's come in. So it's almost, it was, it felt a little competitive on that piece. And I, and I'm sure that she would have done a beautiful job in either of the two she interviewed for before. She would with this if this council decides to. But it seemed to be a little bit more of a play than I would have liked it to be. But I really liked her.
Thank you. Councilmember Questa?
You bet. And I, I won't drone on for too long. I appreciate persistence in people and she's certainly showing plenty of that, giving us a third crack at it. To Councilmember Ciara's point regarding the PowerPoint, and I know there's a lot of schools of thought on, on how people should be using PowerPoint this day and age. For me, it was more a bold move to get up there without a PowerPoint because I use it myself and sometimes it's easy for me to fall back on and it's my crutch and it's got all my information up there. So I thought that she was, that put you a bit more on the tight rope and I thought she did well. She seemed to have her material in front of her and I thought she knew a lot of the, just little factoids about the city, which I think is part of doing it. And I thought the first woman that we met with did as well. I definitely think she highlighted also that they're a, a woman-owned business and that they've got a track record of finding the appropriate candidates if they are, depending upon gender, ethnicity, whatever the case may be. I didn't think that she would tip the scales towards that. That wasn't the impression that I walked away with as well. You know, I think she'd provide a fair search. I thought for me, at the end of the day, it was our first presentation or our third presentation that I thought stood out to me. So she was one of my top two candidates and I thought she gave a really good presentation. I too noticed the lack of PowerPoint and I, I, it was, it certainly wasn't negative to me. But it's, I appreciate your perspective on the two, Councilmember Ciara. Thanks, Mayor.
Mayor Proton Russell?
She too was one of my top two candidates. I agree with the things that have been said. I think she was very well-prepared. The, trying to re, I think it was her when we were talking about getting community feedback. I, I appreciated what she shared. I also appreciated Ms. Voorhees in that too, that she would bring us back all the raw data from, from the cards. So I think community feedback on both of them is really strong.
Councilmember Ciara can?
Actually, I was going to say.
I was going to ask if I could speak first and then you want to add more?
No.
I, these two that were both Novak and Gov. HR were my top two. I thought that Novak, I mean, it was pretty risky of her not to use something. I, I am not a big PowerPoint fan, but I am a fan of making really clear to people when you're trying to explain to them what you're going to do. And I felt as though the questions we asked them finally got at it. But I don't, I didn't feel like her presentation itself was very strong and it was very brief. And, but our questions kept, circled back and we had to ask a few more questions to get at it. It finally came, but I would have loved to have seen a little bit more of a layout of it. And I know we had her stuff from before, but if you're going to come and try and sell yourself for your third time, you would think you would really put everything together. And that's what concerned me more than anything else. I really like her and I remember both times now. Well, I sort of do. I remember that we had a women-only group, but I know one time we, we were really close to asking her. But, so I, I just, I, I just did want a little bit more cohesiveness to that presentation into what we had before us. And it does not need to be in a PowerPoint. I'm not, it doesn't matter to me one way or the other. Councilmember Ciara, you wanted to add some more?
No, I probably shouldn't just because it's kicking, kicking the dog when it's down, but it's about the PowerPoint, so.
Go ahead. I mean, let's see, don't want to, don't feel.
No, so I was going to say, so I guess my problem with the PowerPoint, or the comment about the PowerPoint, was that she didn't like to do PowerPoints. So it was, her personally didn't want the PowerPoints, but the presentation wasn't for her, it's for us. And so just that comment made me think, I, I don't think it's going to sway her way of working, but it just put a thought in my head that, you know, she was, she just looked at it from her perspective, not necessarily our perspective. And so.
Thank you. I think that was a helpful comment. You have to know your audience and be seeking out best ways to communicate to all different kinds of learners and listeners. So that said, for all of us, would you want to venture into a first choice, second choice? And who you would have as your?
Yes.
Okay. Who would like to begin?
I will begin.
All right.
Gov. HR, first choice. Novak, second choice.
Councilmember Berentine?
That's, if, that's voting. So does somebody just want to make a motion?
If you'd prefer to do it that way and just make a motion?
I would.
And not, not sort of give your top choices to get a consensus and then vote. Councilmember Ciara and for the rest? And Mr. Questa, do you care?
If we go straight to a vote, that's fine with me.
Okay, well then would someone like to make a motion? Councilmember Wink, you might.
I move to nominate Gov. HR for our executive search firm for our city manager position.
Second. All right, you two can. I think it was Mayor Proton, second. And then any further discussion? Seeing none vote.
A vote's been cast. Let the record show, six ayes.
Thank you. On to the second item, and there may have been some misunderstanding about why this was included in the minute, or in this list. So just let me tell you that council meeting efficiencies has been something we've been talking about. There were ideas that have been floating that I gleaned from some of the sites I sent you a while back, as well as the staff and their observations put together some ideas here. That's what these are that you received. And my hope is that this time we could come up with some of, I, I'm not suggesting that we adopt all these. I'm just suggesting these are ideas. So what I'd like to do is come up with some sort of sense about how you want to keep these meetings moving. And any other ideas? The very last one is other council ideas for effective and efficient meetings. So I guess I'm going to ask just that you hit your button and speak away. Councilmember Berentine?
Wouldn't this be better if we're going to try and adopt something that the discussion piece, if it comes to study session?
We've tried to put it into a study session over and over and it's just been kicked down the road. So the conversation was where to put it in and we thought maybe this would be the best night since we had a little bit less of a long meeting, but I would prefer to be done by 10:00 or 9:30 every night.
Well, this is one of the reasons we're, we're, we're not. I, I think we put way too much on to the agenda and we don't anticipate that the purpose of study sessions is, is to get information and for us to discuss and get information from staff, from presentations, not just for them to present. And kind of like tonight, this is probably not a good, I don't think that this is a good way to handle this on the dais. I don't think this, I think it should go to a study session for a discussion. And if we don't have time to go ahead and put the discussion on, on how we do a better meeting because we don't have any meeting time to put it on, then maybe that's indicative of the problem.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
Thanks, Mayor. I, I really appreciate almost all of these and what we do with it later, but maybe I won't comment on. One, two, three, four, five. So the fifth bullet, always put second reading of ordinances on consent if the original vote was unanimous. Seven, zero. I think that's, I starred that as one. I think we can definitely, that seemed, I would imagine everyone thinks that's sensible. We, we, but I thought that was a very strong one we should seriously consider moving forward with. I also thought the penultimate one about reading the entire text of proclamations, since it's printed in the, the notes, that the public have access to, that we have already read, I think that's fine. That'll save, you know, minutes add up. I also think the, I mean, they're all great. The, putting some time limits, I know, is a fundamental way to manage efficiently council meetings. I've read this all over the place, from different governing bodies, from cities that have done things well and not done things well. So I appreciate the third from the bottom recommending the 45, 60 minutes at the beginning. And then moving the remainder of, so having public comments in the beginning, limited, one, and having those comments pertain to our agenda for that evening, I think that will help. And then considering moving the other ones, any other comments? So we're not limiting anyone from sharing their comment and their feedback, but moving more general comments to perhaps the end of the meeting, I think might help. Might help us get through the business of the city. And might help more people be here for the business of the city. So I thought that was also very good. You know, I went to a couple of trainings when I was first elected and they both focused on the consent agenda items and, and said that. And there were many mayors with years and years of experience, city managers and former and present council members that helped drive both trainings. And there was unanimous mention of consent agenda items going on and never being contested once it's on our agenda and in front of us on the dais. And I feel, and we discussed why and how the consent agenda items come to the consent agenda item. And every week, I, I see us having a lot of back and forth and discussion and questions, questions over the consent agenda items. So I don't know what might need to happen in advance of it being here before us on the dais. But I would like to see us be able to pass the consent agenda item and move on because we're already knowledgeable about what's there, why it's there. We've asked those questions previously. We've clarified anything that's confusing so we can, I think that would help us also save some time in our meetings. I'll let somebody else talk before I share anymore.
Thank you. Mayor Proton Russell?
Just to talk about the consent agenda items, as far as coming up with them, it is very difficult for us to come up with them because we're making a determination on one sentence. And, and so it's kind of been a struggle. That's, that's what I'm going to say about that. It's not that we're, I want to be careful and be transparent to the citizens. Really, what I want this discussion to be about is how we can not only save time, but also be transparent and, and allow the citizens to speak about what they want to speak about. This is the only time that they have to redress their elected public officials. So I don't want to cut back on that. There's, and as far as reading proclamations, I, I think that if we feel it's important enough to make a proclamation, that we should read it. I, if it's, if it's not that important, then let's not put it on the agenda. The, I think that one thing that we could do is perhaps maybe the mayor should stop reading the disclaimer prior to scheduled public comment and prior to unscheduled public comment because they can read it. And so that would save us a few minutes here and there. I, and I think one other thing we need to do is stop overloading the agenda. And I mean, that is part of the problem, is overloading the agenda. And I know that there's a lot of stuff, but, and I think another thing that would help us is perhaps a lot of things need to start coming through the study session before they come here. And I believe that would help us. But then we need to be careful not to overload the study session agendas also.
Councilmember Ciara?
I was going to say, so a lot has been said. Just a couple of things I want to highlight here is that I love the fact that we did state that there's, we're going to talk about the procurement process at the January 28 study session. So obviously with the comment that you just made, Mayor Proton, that you're, you're, you're putting things on consent agenda with just one sentence, doesn't give you enough visibility to what it is that we're going to be voting on, so.
Let me clarify that a little bit. We do have, we have one sentence written down. So we haven't seen all the documents, but our interim city manager explains them to us.
Right.
But she and I have not seen all the other documents to see something that might cause us pause to take it off.
Like on the vehicles today, the, how much it was going to cost. I mean, we might have that, but I mean, I'll pass this around. This is what, this is the information that we have when. we have when we're-
Point of information?
Choosing.
Yes. Regarding this, is that, is that standard municipality practice that the mayor, Protem, and the, and the city, and the mayor, in your mayor-manager meeting with the city manager, that you have that amount of information on the consent agenda items? Because if cities are passing them and that also care about transparency and wanting the citizens to understand what's happening, what differently are they doing that maybe we aren't doing that enables you to, to feel comfortable in coming here than the subsequent Monday, or, and be comfortable moving it forward? So maybe there's a disconnect there, or?
That's a, that's a good question. So I've been asking a lot of other cities how they go about this, and they all do it a little differently, and before Manager Keck left, I asked him if he would look at a number of cities and their processes to help us with this a little bit more clearly, and that we could get tripping points of when it would go in consent and when it wouldn't, and that we all agreed. I mean, right now, Mayor Protem and I are sort of deciding what we think we can tolerate, knowing full well that more information's going to come out and might mean that someone needs to pull it, which is fine, but it would be helpful if we knew, like the one, you know, we've all voted 100%, that one makes sense. Are there any other, and I've asked, I asked this even when Mayor Jefferson was on, what could we do to, to just make it clear that we always know it's going to go into regular, or it's always going to go into consent, and know that sometimes it's going to get pulled, but if we could have less of that, and a little bit more calling of staff on Monday to say, hey, I have just this one thing, I don't think I need to pull it, but, and if we could be more diligent about that, that is what's read in our policies, to try and do that out of respect, too, so, I mean, but I'm all, I, I would love to have a few more examples from other cities, not all cities do it this way, not all do mayor-manager and Protem, some just do it manager and mayor, it's, it's all over the map, so I think we have to do what we feel comfortable with. I am glad with the way it's set up. I like the way it's set up.
Okay. It just feels like a big chunk of discussion time in the meeting, I've just thought maybe it's something we could-
You mean for our meeting together?
No, for our, for the consent time.
Yes, yes.
I think, I think perhaps if we brought some of this stuff forward during study session.
And we have been, I mean, interim city manager has moved many more things. You've noticed, we are getting stuff now, a lot more there that's informational, and then we have cut the presentation on the night of, because we've already gotten it before and just asked questions, and that part of that, to me, is, is just a respect for us. We've read this stuff, and if you haven't read it, then shame on you, but, yeah. So, Councilmember Berentine?
I'm not finished yet.
Oh, you're not? Sorry, sorry.
So, no, I was just going to say, so, I, I like the 7-0 second reading, we saw tonight that no staff presentation, so that really sped up the process, and I think that's it, so I, I think there's very good informa, oh, the, the last one I wanted to say was the public hearings. I know we're saying that we probably put more things on the study session calendar, but having the public hearings instead of the study session or during that time does make sense, although I'm not sure if we can really fit it in at that time, but.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentine?
I would like to have a better process for things like proclamations and council putting issues out. I mean, we had council member Sierra, and rightfully so, we wanted the issue brought up, but we were able to quickly put the, the code enforcement board issue on for a study session, so obviously it's very possible when we can, when we have an issue we want to discuss to move things around, but maybe a little bit more council input, I mean, kind of like the proclamation, you just put that on there, and, I mean, I don't know if any member of council could just put something on the agenda and have a proclamation come forward like that, so, you know, maybe if we could have a, a little bit better process. Moving the public comment to the end, thank God there's still public here that, that lasted, but if somebody really had an issue that they wanted to talk, I don't think that we should ever expect them to move it back, and I would never refer to the public and their issues and their concerns that they want to bring forward, both to the public and to this council, as not the business of this council. They are the business of this council, so I don't want to give that impression, I don't want to move it to the end.
Point of information. I beg your pardon. Did you, did you understand, Member Berentine, I meant the, the business of the evening on the agenda of that night? That's what I meant.
I do.
Okay.
And, and I, and I stand with what I'm, what I'm saying, I've seen other cities try to do that and have it fail, because what you're trying to do is tell people that they have, they can come at an opportune time, when you've got most people watching on streaming, and most people still in the audience, and then what they, and you're going to limit what they can address to only what you have on the agenda for that night, hasn't gone over well in other places. I, I think that's inappropriate. I think we have the public comment time, and we should stick with that, so I did understand what you said, and I'll stick with what I said. The consent agenda, there were two things on the consent agenda we voted down. I mean, I, I assume that there, to just, to just flippantly say, we've already heard it, we've already read it, we've already done, that's, that's not always true. We haven't discussed, maybe we've had some information, but there were issues that came forward tonight that I were, I was grateful that we discussed. So I, I think to put it in the terms of, staff is giving us enough information, we should just pass stuff, plus I don't think we can pass a policy like that, even if it passes on, on first reading, there are going to be times when some additional information comes to you, and you're not, and you're going to want to pull it the next time, and we can't take that right away from us as representatives, so I, I think not overloading it, making sure that we understand that we're going to need to have some discussion on issues, that this is certainly never the intent to be a rubber stamp for staff, we're there to aid in the system and to represent the community, and we come with a different viewpoint, that's going to take some time for the discussion, and that we don't overlook, that we don't overload it, because we're getting backed up a little by acting as if just a presentation, and it's in some kind of process where it's just going to go forward. And respectfully, I know things happen in people's family, I know people, things happen in people's lives, I take this commitment very seriously, people need to attend the meetings, need to, we need to attend the meetings. I haven't missed any. If my mother should pass, if something should happen-
Thank you, Councilmember Berentine, could you talk about the efficiencies of the meeting right now?
I, I am, and I told you that there were others that I thought were of a concern, and, and that was exactly what happened in December, that pushed things back, and if you already know you're going to be on vacation or you have a work obligation, then let's not make a public hearing that night, let's not put a vote that's going to be contentious or of some issue on that night that then pushes it on to a second and third and fourth night or fourth vote when it wasn't necessary. So maybe a little bit more thought for that.
Is that all?
It is.
Thank you. I'm asking because sometimes when I, when I go on, you think-
I've answered.
I've cut you off. I'm just telling you why, I just want to make sure you know, I'm trying to be respectful. So I am going to answer to a couple of things there. I did tell the staff when I would be out of town, and several of the things that came forward to you could not be changed because of timing, they had to come forward, there was nothing we could do. Done and said over, I hope we can drop that issue. People do have their lives, and if someone's got a, a loved one in hospice, I hope we would never, ever consider that that should not come first, at least not in my value system, but I know we have different values, so it's fine. I also wanted, we have different ways of approaching that. And that's fine.
Very offensive.
Consent agenda, I do want to say that I do not want to ever limit your ability, our ability, my ability, to take something off a consent agenda. That is not my goal. My goal is to figure out, are there some common ways in which we can decide that Mayor Protem and I don't have to make these judgment calls on all of you, on whether or not you're going to pull it or not, and that's why I'm glad we're working together, because she seems, sees things differently than I do. So all I'm asking for here is that we consider, what are some things that we know for sure? We always want those on regular, and let's just do it. And if there are some that are at a threshold we know, you know, really, we can leave those on consent, then I'd like to do that, and when we hire our city manager, I'm going to ask him to go out and figure out other ways cities do some of this. Manager Keck said a lot of it was done by city study, study session, which interim city managers moved us towards, so. Anyway, those are some of the comments I wanted to make in response. Councilmember Quest, you've not said anything yet.
I'm happy to chime in. You know, I think some of the suggestions that were given, we shave a few minutes off it, and I, I think we need something that carries more bulk than that. I would agree that, I mean, I think sometimes just we get overloaded on the schedule. Now, part of me wonders, is, is that just because we have too many items, that, okay, if we go a little thinner this week, but we're just going to jam up the following week and, and the weeks after that, so it might be a matter of how can we cut down the things that appear on this. I would say in terms of moving the, the public comment to the end, or even if it's matters that aren't on the agenda for that evening, I get apprehensive on that, I feel like, you know, citizens just feel like we're waiting them out, because nobody's going to stay this late, except for my wonderful District 3 and District 4 citizens, who are always in there for the long haul, but the average citizen can't wait this late, and this is an early night, we've had some go very late, and so I don't want to put citizens in that position where they've got to wait that late, and you know, and there's a few times it's taken hour, hour and a half to get through public comment, and I'd rather we just, we just absorb that time, and if we got to do it, we got to do it. And I realize I probably offered no solutions in what I just presented there, Councilmember Olson, but we've had the one outlier where we went to 1:00, 1:30, whatever it is, I think most of the time we're out of here by 11:12, but I appreciate for the average citizen that wants to follow along, too, you know, not even just this evening, but they'll watch it the next day, you know, the days after. It's hard to take in a five-hour meeting, you know, most citizens don't have the time to do that, so, again, I don't think I offered any solutions, but I realize it's something that, you know, for the betterment of council and, and citizen participation and involvement, we got to get our arms around it a little bit. Thank you.
All right. Councilmember Wink?
Thank you. One additional comment to consent agenda item, to, separate of what I said before, I do like the idea of, and this feeds into what you said, Mayor Olson, that you would like to feel more comfortable with, Mayor Protem, in, in terms of how you're preparing and how you're both feeling coming into the meeting with the consent agenda item. This purchase approvals, all purchase approvals, putting, being placed on consent if the funds are budgeted previously and procurement process has been followed. I mean, there's several times in meetings where one of us asks the presenter, was this budgeted for before, and they say, yes, almost 100%. There are times when it isn't, but there's a way for us to know, we have the budget, if it's budgeted for. So it's budgeted or it's not, but if it is budgeted for, and the procurement process has indeed been followed, okay. I mean, it seems like some of the primary concerns we usually have, right? And then, more generally, you know, I feel as if we've been commenting on the branches of the tree. I think the root of all of this might be, something you kind of touched on, Mayor, is that I, I feel like our, the different ethos with which we approach our positions, these elected positions here, tends to present delays in our meetings. I think, and I'll talk a tiny bit about it, I won't go on too long, but I feel like there's a lot there that drives the continuation of debate, and I'm saying things like, I'm referring to things like, some of us appreciate the difference of a community perspective and the professional slash technical perspective. Some of us are 100%, the community wants this, we must do this. Others see it both ways, I think a balance is healthy, but I feel like that's the root of some of our long arguments, the community wants this, some of us are looking technically at what's here and considering the community and trying to balance it, but we end up arguing about that, or, you know, being tolerant of imperfection, and maybe some mistakes happen, and then sometimes we go on beating certain people about something that's happened. Well, okay, a mistake happened, they said it, we know it, can we move on, or are we going to argue about it for half an hour? Just, you know, being supportive of reasonable risk-taking, I feel like we have these pretty pronounced differences in just the value systems that we both bring here, and it's, I, I don't know if that'll ever change, I think that maybe ongoing team building with our, our council might help us just understand these differences in parts of it and help us work more closely together. I really feel, like, tonight's agenda and some of the longer ones, we can break through them pretty quickly if we're not arguing about these kind of fundamental ways of seeing things. So I think that's a part, maybe it's something we, we can't help very much of, but I do think that those underlying pieces tend to delay a lot of our processing. Just not fixing anything, but I want to say that I really strongly believe that.
Thank you. I'm going to, I'm going to say a comment and then turn it on to Mayor Pro, Protem, and then stop with her comments. I, what I'd like to, I think this has been a good discussion, and after she makes her comment, what I'd like to do is then we're going to try and figure out if we can put this on the study session next week to wrap it up, so that then on the following regular meeting, we will comment. So if you have other ideas that have not been talked about here, or you think of things, I would like us to finish the discussion in our next study session. So Mayor Protem, final, final words.
That was one thing that I was going to bring up, is, is it possible that we could fit it into the study session on Monday night to finish up? And, and just one quick comment to Councilmember Wink's point, I think part of it gets exacerbated by having so much stuff on the agenda and going really late at night, and it just makes things more difficult. I think we can tolerate each other's idiosyncrasies when we're not tired, but when we get tired, I think it becomes more difficult, so that's-
Thank you. Well said. All right, so we're going to plan to continue the conversation on Monday, and I already have some ideas for some of the things that were mentioned, so hopefully you'll come with those as well. I'm just going to go ahead and move it along to council, other council member, oh, no, I was going to bring something else up regarding boards and commissions, and maybe I will do that at the study session instead. All right. Who would like to start out, council members' choice? Mayor Protem?
Just real quick, and I have already talked with, with Dorothy and I think with Allison a little bit, the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee did come up with a recommendation that they want to bring back to council, and so do I need to bring that up, or does a liaison need to bring that up, or how do we bring that forward to get it put on the agenda?
My understanding is that liaison is the perfect vehicle to bring that to the attention of council and ask that we consider that. You could send it back to the commission, ask them to come up with a general guideline of what they'd like us to look at, and then city council could instruct the city attorney's office to, to take a look at the details.
Okay. All right, that, that answers that question. So I will get the, they decided the, the wording last week, so I will get that wording to bring it forward then. And I believe that's all for tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Wink?
No comment tonight, no report.
Councilmember Quest?
I, I've got a few, I'll pardon myself in advance. The first one is that I got an answer to my council's request regarding the water main breaks that we had had, call it a couple, three weeks ago now, and I went over how many we had had, how many we typically have on average in the period of a year, and to me, it does lead into that larger question of infrastructure, and that seems to be kind of surfacing more and more. And the number that I've heard, and Mr. Brennan isn't here, and I believe he's spoken to it, is that I believe our capacity is set for like 50,000 people is the number that I've heard, but that was based upon some, some math that was done back in the 70s. I do wonder that as we have these ongoing questions about, for instance, Alta, we could very possibly have a redevelopment here that could bring in more residential, I don't think it would hurt for the city to know, what is our capacity right here, right now? Under modern water uses, what can our water infrastructure sustain? I think that it would just eliminate this guessing that we all kind of do and say, well, back in 1970, it was good for 50,000 people. I do still think that fundamentally, infrastructure and public safety are the responsibility of this council. We know we're going to have to do some sort of repairs over there at the Tacoma-Banock area that was hit by the flood, and for me, I just feel like we're kind of grasping at this infrastructure number that is very, very dated, and I'm not too reflective of just what this city can currently hold, and I don't want it to be some phantom issue either, where we, we're not going to prove any development because we don't know what it is, because maybe we can sustain another 20,000 people, 15,000 people, whatever it is, but that feels very undetermined to me right now, and I personally would like to have that number, even for the peace of mind of the citizens. That's just something I want to put out there, and I'll probably harp on that a few more times as we go forward. The second one, a, a citizen asked me about an article that appeared in the Inwood Herald, and it regarded the concealed carry policy within the chambers here, and this isn't to debate the policy itself, it's more that I have an understanding of it. The article seemed to insinuate that perhaps over the past few months that concealed carry weapons were allowed within the chambers, but then recently that was not the case. Can you guys just, can you tell me where that policy currently stands and where, where it has been as well? If it's a new policy, or if, if there's been a recent change to it?
I can't speak to the, the recency of the change, the policy is to limit concealed carry in the secured council area during public meetings in the council chambers.
And I'm sorry, do you know how far back that goes? I know you said you can't say how recent it was.
I would, I would have to double check for an exact date.
Do you mind? I, I would be curious, and the other, how would people be informed of that? For instance, I, this particular member said, I was under the impression that really- For instance, this particular member said, I was under the impression that really no weapons were allowed. And I think it's, really, you walk through a metal detector, you get that impression. Is, but let's say you're somebody who does concealed carry, is there something clearly stating, you know, that, that would not be allowed within these chambers? For me, this isn't a discussion of the policy, just that the policy is clear and everybody knows to expect when entering the chamber. Third one is poor Ms. Tammy Williams. That woman has come up here too many times asking for us for some sort of action on that house. The documents that I saw, and this is 4888 Washington, I believe, the documents that got sent around, and this goes back a month-
4180.
4180, excuse me. The documents that got sent around at least a couple of months ago now, to me showed clear violations at this neighboring household of hers. I am at this point concerned as to why some sort of action hasn't been taken. And beyond that, if there's a reason why we can take that action, if, if that could please be shared. Because, you know, I, I feel like this woman has been overly patient with the situation. Based upon the documents I saw, it does appear that there are violations taking place that residents next to her. So if we could get some clarity as to what is happening there. Truth be told, I'm tail between my legs anymore when she comes up here, and I feel has, is pleading your case, and really, nothing is moving at all. And that, that sums it up. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Berentang.
The Water and Sewer Board, I, I did bring up about the red tag and some of the concerns with the fees. I'd like that to be a council request so that that information comes forward separate as we discussed in the study session, along with the, some of the fee increases with Public Works. I, I do have some concern with some of the building permits and issues that are going on that maybe we're not fulfilling some of that. I would like to have a little bit more information come forward to a study session on, and that may happen after some other issues get brought up about some of the permitting and inspections that we're doing. So we might, we might hold off on that, but I just want to put that on the radar for everybody that there's some concerns about that. The Inglewood Housing Authority, for my report, is still looking at marketplace rentals, purchasing some additional property. We had some problems with that in the past because of the way that that went down, as the city attorney well knows, that the way that it happened between the executive session. I believe that we're in the process of doing that again, so I want to put that on everybody's radar again. And some concerns that we're still using some monies, excess monies from Simon Center to purchase market rate properties, and we're still trying to talk to them about, you know, exactly what the scope of that board is and whether we're supposed to be in marketplace or that. Otherwise, they're doing very well, and I hope that y'all listen to the meetings, the minutes for that. I appreciate Councilmember Questa bringing up Tam Williamson. She, she lives right in my neighborhood there. I have been over there several times, and it is beyond me that somebody can publicly put out there what they have done without permits, that they have the living situations that they have, make it very public and open, and then have no repercussions for what they've done. We also need to make sure that we're doing permitting and enforcing the permitting and inspection. We want to make sure that if somebody does some makeshift apartments in their home, that these people are safe. And that, that's what the permitting and inspections are supposed to do as well, not only for her enjoyment of, of her property, but, you know, they're in a single-family residential area. He can't just make an apartment out of a house when he feels like it because he's making money on it. And then the Airbnb situation that he's created there has caused her and the neighbors across the alley a lot of problems. People are collecting trash and blocking off other people's access to their own property. These are very enforceable, and I don't know why we're having such a problem with this. She is persistent, and I would share your concern that every time I see her, I, I feel somewhat helpless because it's obvious that the codes are being violated and we're, and we're not enforcing, and I don't know why. She was very dismayed by the information that she got from the Community Development Department that just said, well, we're looking at passing Airbnb, so we're not enforcing. I was not made aware that we were not enforcing the laws of our city for having multiple families in a single-family residential zoned area. So if we could, I echo your wanting to have that followed up with. Vicky Hoffman, I would like to get a copy of the Core Request that she said was not one and that she was supposed to go directly to HR. I'd like to at least see a copy of that or have council get a copy of that to why that wasn't a Core Request or how we're evaluating Core Request to make that kind of determination to somebody that they should just go directly to HR and, and talk about an issue like that. I'm not, I'm a little confused. The concealed carry issue, it is of concern that we follow the law, and I would like for the council to know what the law is. And in the state of Colorado, it's, they've, I've had some similar conversations, and if this council can only prohibit somebody from exercising their concealed carry permit by passing an ordinance, then we do not have one. And if that's the case, then we can't just decide one day what the law is and decide the next what it is. That's, we need consistency. And if this council needs to pass an ordinance in order for that to be enforced against somebody who legitimately has already done background checks and have, have, you know, gotten their concealed carry permit, then we need to follow process and procedure because we can't do it from day to day. And that seems to be what's going on, and that's, that's concerning. And I believe, oh, and then on the immigration policy, if, I believe that Mr. Walker probably got that off of the website, if that's on the website and the police department is writing that we have to make a decision on this council, whether that's our policy or not. Police don't write the city's policy on, on what they're going to enforce or not. So that is concerning, and we at least need to discuss whether that's the policy of the city or the policy of the police department, and then who the police department works for. That's all I had.
Councilmember, well, did you, you had something to add?
I just have a question for council request after we're done with council.
Councilmember Sierra.
Two things for me tonight. So the first thing, just, it came up tonight just because of the RMS vote, but I'd like to ask the city manager, anytime that we do evaluate any type of software purchases that we also consider as part of that same agenda item, or just have a line on what the potential cost for any project management or training would be? I know that we've been talking about an asset management system potentially for 2019. So just having that visibility upfront, I think would be appreciated, just, just because, based on the conversations I've had with IT or just what's been said by IT during some of the study sessions, it sounds like their plate is full. So just understanding this, what happened with the RMS project that they didn't have the resources available, so now we have to identify a project manager for it. So, so that's one thing. And then I guess second, I guess I'll ask you first, Mayor Olson, for the study session regarding the boards and commissions, what exactly did you mean there?
I'm uncomfortable leaving planning and zoning without a full member, and so I would like to see us decide on a remedy for that.
Okay. So I guess my question or my comment tonight is that I do want council to reevaluate, I'm not sure how to word this, but just look at the priorities and processes of the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee. I do agree that they've been doing some good work, but I do think that there are some processes and procedures that are falling outside their scope that I'm not in agreement with. So I've, I've been going through the bylaws just to understand what type of communication they're allowed or what type of communication they should have as a board with code enforcement. The way that I'm reading it, it's like they really only should be working through the city manager and through council. And I, you know, based on just an email exchange that happened last week that we all received, it sounds like they are working or the, well, that they are involved with code, with the code enforcement staff in some sort of capacity outside of the board hours or the commission hours. So I just need to get that understanding. There's a couple of other things that I wrote down. This is more personally for me, just in terms of like the community response to committee discussions. You know, there, there's just some other things I've been writing, but I think that we do need to reevaluate this, and I'd like to have it on the next, on the next agenda for city council. I'm not sure exactly what I need to do in order for that to happen.
I think I'm unclear, I, maybe you've combined two things. I'm a little bit confused. Can you restate what you want for the-
So there's, so I, I, well, I, I believe, one, we need to put them on, put the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee on pause. And the purpose of it is to reevaluate the scope of the committee. I do feel that they are going, going outside the scope of their, of their processes and procedures in regards to the communication that they're having with the code enforcement staff.
So that's one, but you had a second thing with it that seemed like it was unrelated almost, or you wanted something on a study session. Was that this?
Oh, no, that, that was it. No, so I, for a study session, it was more about your question about what study, what you meant by bringing it to the boards and commissions to study session. So it had nothing to do with, so I'm not sure if this needs to be talked about in study session, which would be fine with me, because it does give the Code Enforcement Advisory Committee a chance to give their side of the story as well, if, if we wanted to do it that way.
I thought, yes, well, council can weigh in on this. This is council request time, so do you want to open up council a discussion on this right now? Or do you want us to try, is this, is this in everybody's mind something so important we should put on the study session next week? We did come up with a plan at the last one, which was to have someone visit them or be with them, but now you're suggesting that it be a pause, which is fine, but I just want to make sure that we want to, we want to do this right now. Councilmember Questa.
If the vote is to do it right now, I'm certainly game, but you'll get a sharper version of me at the next study session if, if we can wait. And I thought we reached a conclusion as well. If we want to revisit it, that's okay, though. Thank you. This is just in terms of pausing CEAC, you're not correct.
Right, right.
Actually, I mean, I'm, I'm still, I'm still not in favor of pausing it, I guess. There we go. Thank you.
Mayor Protem, Russell.
All right. I would like to address that. I, I am in complete disagreement with Councilmember Sierra. I, I've been on that committee for a long time. I think maybe there are some things that you don't understand that you do need to understand, but I don't think that it's fair to pause the committee. They, I think probably some of those things I could talk to you about, the, some of it has to do with the city manager.
So Mayor Protem, I was-
Okay.
I, I know you want to respond, so I'm asking, do we want to talk about it right now? Or, or can we-
No, I don't want to talk to him. I can, I can talk to him, but I don't think we need to put it on a study session. So.
Councilmember, let's, let's keep it. Councilmember Wink.
Thank you, Mayor. Do you have a choice? I, I appreciate everything Member Sierra said, and I'm happy to, I, I think it at least should be on a study session. If everyone agree, wants to talk about it tonight, I'm okay with that. I'd prefer not to. But I, I would like some time on a study session because what Member Sierra said is pretty strong and indicative of a need to discuss, in my opinion.
Okay. Councilmember Berentang.
I don't think we should bring it to a study session, not next, not next week, depending we couldn't even move the discussion on how to shorten our meetings because we didn't have time in a study session, and this would already be yet another conversation about the same issues going on. We have more than a month before they meet again.
Thank you. It's clear what your answer is. Member Questa, do you want it tonight, Monday night, or not at all?
You know, I, I-
And I am not interested in pausing them. Thank you for letting me finish, Mayor.
Thank you.
Again.
And you know, if, if there is a concern of, of a fellow council member, I'm always happy to hear it out. A study session for me would probably be a better, when available.
Let's, we will try and figure out a way to put it on to a study session, hopefully Monday night, but if not, it might have to, it might have to wait. Member, I, I really do want to end the meeting, so unless there's something that is so-
The council request is what I want.
Right. You, you want to add to your council request, even though you already-
No, that council request was not, was as recent.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
This is a council request for Chris Dewis, the video that he showed with the ongoing issues in his alley. Would you see if code enforcement could look into those and address that problem? Sir? Thank you.
Thank you. That was a good reminder. Let's try and remember to do council requests in our thing, but if we don't, our, I will, I have been writing down some, I want to make sure that we get them, and if anybody sees something we missed tonight, to email us because we can make sure that it gets on a council, or just send it out as a council request. If after tonight you think, oh, I really meant to have that be a council request, just email it to the attorney, to the city manager. All right. Next up is-